I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. From May 13th, 2014. Reverend Hudson, would you please come forward and lead us in order of prayer. Praise him.
Let us pray. Our God, our Father, we bless your name. We come before you even now lifting up our mayor and our council. Pray that you lead and guide them as they conduct the business of this city. It is in your son's name we ask it. Amen.
Thank you. Councilman Mike Carvin, would you lead us in praise?
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair.
Ms. McCullough.
Here.
Mr. Everson.
Here.
Mr. Oliver Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. Marvin.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Mrs. Shine.
Present.
Mrs. Sam Jenkins.
Present.
Okay. Vice Chairman, is there a motion for the approval of the minutes of the administrative conference on Monday, April 21st? City council meeting Tuesday, April 22nd. Been moved by the vice chair, been seconded by Councilman Carvin. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor vote yes, opposed is no.
Oliver Jenkins, Mr. Sam Jenkins.
Approve.
The Jenkins Brothers?
Yes. By a seven oh vote. Rod, I knew it wasn't good when I put the two Jenkins brothers together.
I know it.
But you tried to tell me.
It's our little family business over here.
Yeah, you tried. Rod tried to tell me I was making a mistake, but I went on anyway. You know, some folks are hard-headed. You know, you tell them two or three times, they don't listen, so I apologize. Mr. Mayor, we're gonna put it in your hands at this juncture for warts recognition, distinguished guest.
Mr. Shine, I thought we'd get to the mic so it's on the record.
Please.
Thought I was gonna yield to you to go to Councilman Everson for him to introduce Mr. Cook as the new general manager of the Shreveport Hilton.
Would you hold it just one minute, Dan?
Absolutely.
You're exactly right.
Bring that to your recollection.
There you go. There you go. You know, all this... Pastor Hudson, when you have all this gray hair like I do, sometimes you might have a senior moment. You know, that's senior moment. That's wisdom.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity and thank you to the mayor and to Council Chair Shine. And I'd like to invite up Mr. Cook from the Convention Center Hilton Hotel and anybody else who may be with him today.
Bring Sam with him, though. Don't let him come up by himself.
I didn't know if you snuck out.
His partner?
We met yesterday with the Convention Center Hilton Hotel Committee. I guess it's the authority to review and confirm Mr. Cook as the new general manager of the Hilton Hotel. I thought we would bring him here today to introduce himself and let him make his acquaintance with the council.
Well, excellent. Thank you very much for allowing me here today. It's been a short while I've been in town. I'm still getting used to Shreveport and getting familiar with it. But great to be here. Everyone that I've met so far with the city, with the convention center, the people at the hotel have been phenomenal. So I'm looking forward to bringing what I can to the table and moving the hotel forward in the right direction that it's been going in. So I appreciate everyone's encouragement.
Anybody have any questions for...
No questions, Mr. Chairman, but certainly would like to welcome him aboard. I'm gonna say to him the same thing I said to the other general manager that came aboard. I look forward to having a conversation with you in 90 days.
As do I. And every 90 days after that.
Sounds good.
I wanna say this just before you leave. This is for Sam. I could tell Sam is a good man. We were at the Louisiana Hay Ride Friday night and there, believe it or not, I saw Sam kinda keeping time there, so...
Uh, absolutely.
You know.
Well, he's got a little soft Louisiana in him.
There you go. He's a pretty good guy. Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
And working with a good man. And like I said on yesterday, we trust you, but if we have anybody we have to chew on, it'll be Sam.
I remember that from yesterday.
Thank you very much.
His benefit instead of mine, so that's...
All right. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, sir.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, we turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council members, I want to join you all in extending a formal welcome to Mr. Cook. He is certainly someone who is qualified and we look forward to him doing an outstanding job in partnership and tandem with Sam Vazan and his team over at the Convention Center as well as all the good folks over at the Shreveport Bowser Convention and Visitors Bureau. We know that they all have to work together along with the rest of us out here as citizens, always looking for opportunities to be able to bring, attract type of events and functions that we know can fill up the Hilton and also pack up the Convention Center. So a great team, doing a great job, and we're looking forward to great results. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, in case you had not jotted it down on your calendar, today is Championship Tuesday. This is the day that we have set aside every year during this administration to be able to honor and recognize those particular teams and entities across our region who have excelled on the various fields and courts of various type. And we even have an additional form of endeavor here today as well that we will be recognizing. We're going to start this recognition off. And Rod, you're gonna have to come and make sure I'm handing the right thing to the right person at the right time. So that'll be part of what you do in between taking pictures. So you make sure I got this first group lined up. And we're gonna start, Mr. Chairman, council members, with a group that just keeps on going and going and going and going and going, like the Energizer Bunny. In fact, this streak goes all the way back to the first term of the Glover administration and prior to the service of all of the members of this council with the exception of Shine and Webb. They happened to be domiciled in the council district of Councilman Webb, but they have brought pride and honor and recognition to the entirety of the city. I wanna ask at this time that the members of the Calvary Golf Team, please come and join. Coaches as well. Mr. Chairman, members, last year I introduced the Calvary Boys Golf Team by stating that winning isn't supposed to be easy. But these guys are starting to make it look just like that. But this outstanding group of young golfers might force me to reconsider that particular thought and philosophy. Because when you're good enough to win your fifth straight state championship by 59 shots, no less.
Wow!
Then maybe easy is the way to go.
You didn't make a mistake, did you, Mr.?
No, I did not, Mr. Chairman, by 59. I got reports on the actual day of the tournament that they were up by 40-plus. I didn't realize until we did the final copy that it ended at 59. Now, on the cup row, we call that a beat-down.
That's right. That's right.
But we won't be so crass here in this particular form. The Cavaliers are dominance personified, and they absolutely made the most of their home course advantage last week. Where? At East Ridge. And they absolutely made the most of that home field advantage last week of East Ridge Country Club. Once again, Calvary's Mr. Reliable, also known as Sam Burns, came through with a stellar performance, placing first overall with an eight-under, 134 tournament total. By now, everyone knows that Sam has competed in the state tournament four times. His only position he's familiar with on the leaderboard is at the top spot.
All right.
That's simply amazing. So I know the coaches at LSU can't wait until he gets a chance to replace his green and gold with the purple and gold of LSU. But Sam got plenty of support from his teammates, including Nathan Gensong, another future LSU Tiger who finished second overall. Nathan was followed by Ryan Alfred, Walker Lee, and Gunnar Russell. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, let's give all of these outstanding young men my pleasure to present where the coach is at. For the coach. Since Mayor's Award of Excellence, I'd like you to come up and say a few words to any of these young men that want to share any sentiments as well themselves.
First of all, we did win by 59 strokes. We beat all the classifications by 30, I think it was.
Wow!
I've got a good bunch of kids. You'll hear yes sir, no sir, yes ma'am, no ma'am out of all their mouths. I do have one problem child, but we love him anyway.
All right.
And we appreciate the award. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
Sam?
I'd like to say thank y'all for having us. It's a great honor for us to receive this and we look forward to coming back next year.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, not only did the Calvary Golf Team manage to achieve a state championship this year for the fifth time, the Calvary Football Team, which couldn't be here because they're in preparation for their spring game, but they couldn't join us, but they still want to acknowledge their outstanding season. They put together a way to winning the Division III State Football Championship at the Mercedes-Benz Superdome in December. Coach John Bachmann Sr. kept his Cavaliers on track despite starting the season with a 1-4 record, Mr. Shine.
Wow!
It shows you it's not how you start, but how you finish. So despite starting the season with that 1-4 record, they went on to win the Division III State Championship in football. So let's give Coach Bachmann and all of his football Cavaliers a round of applause. Next, Mr. Chairman, we're going to work our way here if my clicker will cooperate. And if it doesn't, then we'll go, we'll work our way through anyway. What did I just do? All right. Charles, I'm gonna let you come out and help get me straight here, otherwise we'll keep going. At this point, I wanna call some young men I had a chance to meet walking in. And we'll pass this along to Calvary as well to give to Coach Bachmann. I wanna call up the Evangel Boys Tennis Team.
All right.
Please come up and join me, gentlemen. Mr. Chairman, the only thing that might be better than winning a first state championship is moving up in classification and then winning the second one. At least that's how the Evangel Doubles Team of Andrew Deutsch and Devon Sikara sees it after moving up to Class 3A, Division A, Division III, rather, athletics to capture their second state title. This pair of eagles seemed unfazed by tougher competition by dropping a total of just 13 games in five matches and winning their final match in a record 42 minutes. So let's congratulate these young men for meeting this challenge with great style and aplomb. In recognition, all right. Got it. Let me get caught up here. All right, there we go. It's my great pleasure, gentlemen, to present you this Mayor's Award of Excellence. Devin? Congratulations. Keep up the great work. And Mr. Deutsch. Congratulations. Keep the great work as well. Coach, would you come and address the council and either one of you young men that would like to do the same?
We wanna thank you for this opportunity to be here today. We thank you for the invitation. These two young guys, they're good. The only person that could possibly beat them would be the mayor after a few times of practice and myself. But thank you for having us. We appreciate it. We're hoping that they might, they... Andrew is a sophomore and Devon is a junior. I always allow the team the option to stay together if they wish, rather than try to get them to play. So if they stay together next year, we'll have a third one.
All right.
Thank you, guys. And do rest assured that the only way I'd manage to beat you was stood right at the net and just kept you from hitting the ball across. All right. Now, we have an endeavor. There we go. Another image of those young men and their impressive-looking state championship trophy. Now, before you, gentlemen, leave, the parents of these young men, would you please stand and be recognized as well? Raise your hand. And we wanna do the same for the parents, family members of the Calvary Fifth State Championship Golf Team. Any parents who would... All right. Now, we go to something that I know a little bit about, and that is Magnet High School Debate. Let's see, we're gonna come back. Do we have? There we go. We have, we don't have a slide for them, so we'll come back. We'll just hold a magnet there. All right. Coach Norman, please join me with the state champion debaters here. In a slight deviation, Mr. Chairman and members, from our normal run of fun and games, we wanna recognize the Caddo Magnet High School Debate Team for winning the Policy Debate State Championship this year in Lafayette.
All right.
The team of Christian Vargas and Cole Allen did us proud and were complimented by the judges for their poise and sportsmanship in the state league. So while they were often disputed, they were never defeated. Additionally, their teammates Ethan Courtman and Gavin Dykes beat all comers for the right to represent our national district at the National Forensic League Championships in Kansas City this summer. Coach Norman, Christian Vargas, Cole Allen, so proud of you. Carry on the great tradition of Caddo Magnet Debate that goes back to the fall of 1981. In recognition thereof, we present you this Mayor's Award of Excellence for your outstanding work.
I would just like to thank the council and Mayor Glover, my debate coach, all the members of the debate team that have made this a great four years. I plan to carry on with debate in college at Trinity University and I hope to someday see a council room myself.
All right. Hey!
You know, consequently, this past weekend, I just saw the former debate coach of Trinity University, who is now at Wake Forest, and had a chance to visit with him this weekend. He's a graduate of Caddo Magnet High from the same program you went through. So congrats, and I'm sure you will continue on with some great stuff in it.
Thank you. I need to check his age and see which district he lives in. All right. Athletically speaking, Caddo Magnet wins three titles. Sports teams from Caddo Magnet, something I knew nothing of in my tenure there. Sports teams from Caddo Magnet High won two state titles this year in Olympic-style competitions. The Mustangs returned to the top of the podium in girls gymnastics. So would you all join me up here? Where are our girls from Caddo Magnet? We don't have any of them here, but we're gonna recognize them anyway. The girls took top honors in Division III, building an early lead that they never relinquished. This time around, the Mustangs were led by freshman Kara Armstrong, whose score of 36.45 in the all-around competition clinched the title for Caddo Magnet. Once again, the gymnasts shared the spotlight with the archers. We have members of our archery team here? All right, well, we will deliver this to them as well. Once again, the gymnasts shared the spotlight with the archers, who won their sixth state championship since the program began in 2006. The archers outpaced the field by easily winning by a margin of 267 points. The Caddo Magnet Boys Swim Team, the third athletic team to win, also won a state title this year, but information on those results are not available at this particular time. We'll be able to provide those details to you at a future point. But we wanna applaud all three of these teams for Caddo Magnet for their outstanding accomplishments and contributions. And we have some images of them. There's our gymnastics team. They're state championship. And there's our archery team. They're state championship. All right. Let's see here. Now, we gotta go back. I'm looking for the City of Byrd. All right. There we go. See Byrd in the house. Join me up here, please, gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor, since our vice chairman here is a proud Byrd graduate, why don't you let him come down?
We would welcome him. In fact, these young... These young men might also take him out on the leash.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Everybody else didn't get to join there.
I'm sorry.
That, Mr. Jenkins? Absolutely.
Brother Hudson, I don't know why, whenever I look at Sam, I'm always thinking about Booker T. Oh, okay, then. I knew you had a Booker T connection there, Sam. I don't know what it was.
Mr. Jenkins went to Byrd when it was hard to go to Byrd.
Wait a minute now, man. Wait a minute. Wait a minute.
Hey, see, it's hard to go there now.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the council.
Sam, did you hear that?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations. Go out to the Byrd Boys Golf Team. Team that rallied to win the LHSAA Division I State Championship at East Ridge Country Club. This was Byrd's first state title since 1997, when current head coach Casey Martin played in the purple and gold. The Yellow Jackets overcame a slow start to storm from third place to first and win the championship by seven strokes. Let's give these young men a round of applause. Coach, would you come forward? And share some words with us?
All right. Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor. It's really exciting to bring a state title back to Byrd and great news is I got all my players coming back next year.
Oh, yeah.
I had a lot of help from assistant coach Tim Wilson over here. He walked the fairways with me every day and helped out a lot. And I was really surprised when I got a call from the mayor's office. The only thing that two of my players could talk about is they wanted a bear hug from Mayor Glover. Can we arrange that?
The guys from Evangel beat you two, but we got to clean this mess.
Anyways, thank you very much.
Henry, we was trying to get a picture. Henry. Henry. We was trying to get a picture of you hugging the mayor there.
We'll reenact that one.
Not today.
You wanna get it?
Not today.
Come on back around while we bring it up. While we bring it up, Coach Tucker. And at least I see four of our Mavericks. I don't know if we've got five. We've got four.
Mayor, there you go. Let him get you real quick.
Oh, okay.
Let's bear hug him now. All right.
There we go.
That hug is good.
All right.
All right. Going up, Coach? Gentlemen? Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Shreveport Bowser Mavericks, the secret is out. Shreveport Bowser Mavericks, who have simply become the pride and joy of basketball fans in our area. If you didn't get a chance to experience the excitement they brought to the Hirsch Coliseum this past season, especially during the ABA Finals, then shame on you because you missed without question a treat. I won't try to list all the accolades and honors these guys have collected this season, but I want to at least mention a few superlatives. Their coach, Steve Tucker, is the winningest coach in ABA history with a record of 176 wins over 26 losses during the six seasons that he's been at the helm of the Mavericks.
All right, let's give Steve a big hand!
Coach Tucker has also been selected ABA Coach of the Year for four times.
Wow! All right.
Although he's not able to be here with us today, he managed to show up on the court for the Mavs in a big, big way this season. Of course, I'm referencing Ed Horton, who was named the MVP of the ABA for this particular championship season of the Shreveport Bowser Mavericks. Let's give Ed Horton a round of applause. And while the entire team couldn't be here today, I wanna bring up Coach Tucker and see who else they got. Chad Eichelberger, Tyrone, did I get it right?
Yes, sir.
There it works. Tyrone Hamilton, Mike Crane, Hollis Giles, and Tony Hooper. Let's see. Took myself off of my... Oh, there we go. All right, there we go. Mike Crane, Hollis Giles, and Tony Hooper from the front office. And we also have Mia Anne Ferson and Sarah Gayler. In recognition for your national ABA championship, Coach Tucker, it's my great pleasure and privilege to present to you this proclamation that declares today Shreveport Bowser Mavericks Day in the city of Shreveport. In recognition for this outstanding season, your continued winning streak, the one that we expect hopefully will carry on here in Shreveport for years to come.
All right.
Thank you. We're just honored and humbled by this. We've stood up here before you before, and we were in the middle of a magical run, and it continued. These gentlemen back here are the reason that any accolades that go to me should be given to them. Because without their magic on the floor and what our owner Jerry Nelson's given us the support and the platform that we need to perform on, none of this would happen. Also, I wanna recognize Tanisha McKinney in the back over here, as well as, well, she's up here. Perfect spot for her. Give her a big hand, please. Right here also, to just thank you so much for all the work these ladies do. In October, I addressed this team for the 34th time. Thirty-four years I'd addressed teams in opening meetings in October of this past year. And I said, gentlemen, we are going to go after perfection with the realization we will only achieve excellence. They surprised me. They caught perfection. They grasped it. They became the first team in history of the ABA, the first team outside of the NBA to go undefeated at 34-0. They are to be complimented. Give them a big hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Coach.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
With that, we conclude Championship Tuesday.
All right. All right. Sam, at this point, I'm gonna let you do what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to suspend the rules and take up Resolution Number 85 in honor of Dr. Isaac Ben Greggs.
Okay, it's been moved by Sam Jenkins, seconded by Michael Carvin, to suspend the rules in order to bring up the resolution dealing with Dr. Isaac Greggs. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I believe his niece Valerie Dunn is present. I'd ask her to come forward at this time.
You mean the beautiful lady sitting up front?
That would be the one.
Okay.
We certainly appreciate her participating today.
Okay. Sam? In your hand.
I'm asking clerk to please read the resolution.
This is a resolution to commemorate the life and accomplishments of Dr. Isaac Greggs, a native of Shreveport and the former director of the nationally-known Southern University Marching Band and to otherwise provide with respect thereto by Councilman Sam Jenkins. Whereas Isaac Ben Greggs was born in Shreveport on January the 2nd, 1929, graduated from Central Colored High School in Shreveport and from Southern University A&amp;M College in Baton Rouge, earning a Bachelor of Science degree in music after being admitted to Southern University at age 15. And whereas Isaac Ben Greggs earned the Master of Science degree in music education from Vander Cook College. from Vander Cook College in Chicago, Illinois, and a Doctorate in Music from the University of Peru. And whereas, after being drafted in the United States Army, Isaac Ben Greggs became a member of the Army Band, 4th Division, 4th Infantry, where playing the, uh, rev, uh, revoli at sunrise was a part of his duty assignment. And whereas, after military service, Isaac Ben Greggs taught and directed bands at Notre Dame High School and JS Clark Junior High, both in Shreveport, and he played gigs in clubs and in other venues in the greater Shreveport area. And whereas Isaac Ben Greggs and his family moved to Baton Rouge in 1965, where he taught and directed the band at the Southern University Laboratory School. And whereas, in 1969, Isaac Ben Greggs was named Director of the Southern University Marching Band, a position he held for 36 years before retiring in 2007. And whereas, under Dr. Greggs' tenure, the Southern University Marching Band was called, quote, "The Human Jukebox" by students because of the band's bold sound and extensive repertoire of music. And whereas, under Dr. Greggs' leadership, the Southern University Marching Band was invited to perform at many national and international events, including six Super Bowls, four Sugar Bowls, and three Presidential Inaugurations. And whereas, James L. Lawrence, the Chancellor of Southern University's Baton Rouge Campus, has been quoted as saying the following about Dr. Greggs: "What he created with our marching band drew thousands of students to Southern University and left fans of the band in cities from Los Angeles to Houston to New York City." However, the true testament of his leadership is reflected not only in the number of students who have become band directors and musicians of note around the country, but the multitude of former band members who, through the dedication and commitment installed in them by Dr. Greggs, became leaders in their respective chosen careers outside of music. And whereas, Sam Jenkins, a former Southern University student, Government Association President, and current city councilman, has been heard to say, "Because Isaac Greggs was an extraordinary musician, a creative showman, and a master teacher, his Southern University Marching Band defined the genre. It was kinetic energy gliding across the football field. With bold, balanced sound, straight lines and high, quick, crisp, precision steps, the band moved into accurate and complicated formations, including the football game's halftime score, which always drew a thundering roar from fans as loud as did Southern's final winning score," end quote. And whereas Isaac Ben Greggs, who died on April the 28th, 2014, at age 85, leaves to cherish his memory and proud legacy his loving wife of 58 years, Rose Audrey Matway, Matwayer Greggs, devoted children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren, former Southern University Marching Band members, Southern University students, faculty, and alumni, and fans from across this nation. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Shreveport in due regular and legal session convened, that the City Council pauses to commemorate the life and accomplishments of Dr. Isaac Ben Greggs, a native of Shreveport, and a former director of the nationally known Southern University Marching Band. Be it further resolved that the Shreveport City Council recognizes Dr. Isaac Ben Greggs' proud legacy. He improved the quality of life of thousands, if not millions, of persons across this nation who saw the Southern University Marching Band perform. And he instilled in his band members attributes and traits that constitute the formula for success in every profession. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be signed by each member of the City Council and executed in duplicate originals with one original presented to Mrs. Rose Audrey Matwayer Greggs and the other original filed in perpetuity in the office of the Clerk of Council for the city of Shreveport. And this resolution has been signed by all seven council members.
So move? It's been moved by
Second.
the Honorable Sam Jenkins and seconded by the Honorable Rose Wilson McCullough. Before we vote, I would ask just, uh, Mr. Jenkins, Mr. Sam Jenkins, uh, if we have any Southern graduates in there, would you please stand? Okay.
Can I stand?
Uh, Mr. Thompson, you can. You can.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm, I'm gonna present this to her, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
After you take up the vote.
All right, all in favor, vote yea. Passes with a 7-0 vote. Uh, Sam, do the honor.
Joe, it was good to see your spirit of compromise in that signature and in that vote there.
It, it was. It, it was.
I knew that was a challenge for you.
A very hard challenge.
Mr. Chairman, uh, you know, I simply want to say I have so many fond memories of, uh, Dr. Greggs. One thing you could count on, if you was from Shreveport and you were at Southern University, you had a friend in Dr. Isaac Ben Greggs. He was gonna make sure, uh, he'd take you over to the training table, which was the best place to eat at Southern University, make sure that you had something to eat. And he never would give you money, but he'd put a little gas in your car for you so you'd be able to get around. So, he's somebody that I grew to admire over the years and, uh, I just, I'm just glad that we took a little time out today, uh, to commemorate the legacy that this gentleman has made for bands. He changed marching bands. And I think that's the legacy that he left. Often imitated, but never duplicated. The Southern University Human Jukebox was the epitome of a marching band, best band in the land, and that includes a little script of land over here, uh, uh, east of us along Interstate 28. I won't call the place, but I think we know it. And I certainly want to give him his gun and opportunity.
You know, we hadn't said nothing.
To the mayor and city council, on behalf of Uncle Ben and the family, we would like to thank you so much for just taking the time out to recognize him and everything that he's done, um, over the years. And it's just been a wonderful experience just to, uh, you know, I went to Southern. I wanted to be a dancing doll at that time, but my uncle wouldn't have it at that time. But just thank you so much just for taking time out to recognize him. Thank you.
Chairman?
Yes?
Uh, just to express in, in the spirit and the memory of, of this outstanding man, you know, we, we, we won't get into any of the, uh, issues of rivalry, uh, here.
That's right.
So I, it, I'm, I'm sure it did not take, uh, much effort at all, uh, for all seven council members to join unanimously in recognizing someone who without question was a, a, a history maker and innovator. Uh, someone, uh, as Councilman Oliver, uh, Councilman Sam Jenkins said, never forgot, uh, Shreveport. And in fact, I can remember that, uh, I believe even before he journeyed to Southern to become the, uh, the band director, he, uh, taught at JS Clark, uh, school here in Shreveport. And so, uh, without question, as Sam mentioned, he never forgot Shreveport, uh, always was, uh, quick to mention and reference wherever he went. And, uh, uh, helped to bring it to mention, uh, to halftime performances, uh, that many people, uh, still talk about, uh, to date. So, uh, definitely, uh, honor his memory, his presence, and, uh, look forward to that tradition continuing, uh, to go forward for years and years and years to come. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Uh... Sam, it was kinda hard for me to sit down and hold my piece, but I did.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, you ought to appreciate that. I ought to get a candy bar or something after that.
Do we have to make a motion to go back into regular?
No, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna take, just take us back into our regular session. Uh... Council members, did you have any distinguished guests that you would like to recognize? Councilman Michael Carvin?
I do have a couple of things I'd like to mention, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Um, as you mentioned earlier, I think you and I had the opportunity to attend the Hits to the Hayride Friday night.
You sure did.
And, uh, that was, that was a good time. I did have to elbow you a couple of times because you were not singing in the right key.
Oh, my God.
But it was good to see the auditorium looking good and a good crowd and to see young talent, uh, Mr. Des Duran and Willie Jones and Cole Bosberry up on stage along with some of the old timers. Uh, and it was certainly a, a good evening. Also want to recognize Mr. Chris Chandler and his team at Keller Williams Realty. Uh, they took a day off last Thursday. Uh, and for those of you who understand how commission sales work, that's a, that's a big thing to take a day off from working. And, uh, they did service projects throughout Cedar Grove. They planted trees and picked up trash and did a lot of things out there. And, uh, had a group of, uh, kids from Cattle Magnet with them as well, uh, for part of the day. Uh, but they had a group of about 25 folks out working, uh, all day long on a very hot and muggy day. And lastly, I just want to congratulate the Robinson Film Center on their fundraiser Saturday night, uh, downtown. A good crowd there and, uh, hopefully they raised a good bit of, of money for a good cause. And I think everybody had a great time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, yes, sir.
I want to recognize, uh, former District G Councilman and pastor of the Morningstar Baptist Church, Pastor Theron Jackson. He's here with us today, so we certainly want to recognize him. And, uh, also, Pastor Jackson, standing. Let's see you. There you go. Then secondly, I want to congratulate Mrs. Morgan Franklin. She's the daughter of Attorney Carl Franklin and Dr. Kena Franklin. Uh, she has been accepted as an intern working with the First Lady of the United States of America, Flotus, First Lady of the United States of America, Michelle Obama. So I told her, I now have connections with the White House, Mr. Mayor.
Where is she, uh?
No, she's not here today. I just wanted to give her a recognition. She, she's probably up there with the First Lady right now as I'm speaking.
Oh, okay.
Uh, we certainly wanted to recognize that accomplishment, uh, from somebody who, who lives locally here in District G. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'd like to recognize, uh, Reverend Hudson. He's been up already to, uh, give us an invitation, Reverend Hudson. So glad to have you down and you've done a magnificent job as a young man over there with Paradise. And, uh, Brother Lynn Cawthon. I'd like to recognize Brother Lynn Cawthon, a young man, uh, Sam, who finished in Booker T. And Lynn, you're doing an excellent job in the community. Dale, I don't see any of your cousins here.
Uh, they didn't make it today.
They didn't make it today? Okay, then. All right, uh...
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Could I add an addendum on to, uh, Councilman Sam Jenkins', uh, recognition of, 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 of young Miss Franklin?
You sure can.
Uh, not only is she an intern, uh, for the First Lady, uh, in the White House, who I, in fact, I, I, I'll have a picture sent to staff for them to put up at some point before we leave today. Uh, actually came across her back in January, uh, as I was leaving from, uh, uh, some time there and, uh, uh, heard someone, uh, mention my name as a group of young folks passed by. And I asked, uh, "Are you from Louisiana?" And the young lady stepped forward and said, "Not only am I from Louisiana, I'm from Shreveport."
Wow.
And, uh, identified herself and, uh, indicated that she was, uh, interning, uh, with the First Lady. And then also, uh, uh, Mr. Jenkins, I know this will be of particular interest to you as a member of the bar. She shared with me that she has been accepted, uh, to the, uh, freshman class of 2014 for Harvard Law School.
Absolutely.
So she will be starting at Harvard Law this coming fall. Right here from Shreveport, Louisiana, I believe Cattle Magnet High, and the, uh, the daughter of Kena and Carl Franklin.
Absolutely correct.
And I think she might have also gotten a recommendation from, uh, the Honorable Sam Jenkins.
Without question.
All right, to Harvard. He has some connections up there, I'm told.
I didn't know that.
Oh.
I was gonna hold those against him. If that was the case, I was gonna move over a little bit.
I, I think those two folks that live at 1600 Pennsylvania put in a recommendation for it.
Oh, okay. I thought it was Sam over there. Okay, uh, Mrs. Farnell?
Oh, can I say one, one recognition?
I'm sorry.
Um, though unfortunately it's been, uh, several weeks, but since we had a three-week intermission between council, uh, meetings. Uh, Pete Gaffney passed away about two and a half weeks ago. Certainly somebody very involved in the city of Shreveport, uh, from everything from Committee of 100 to formation of the Military Affairs Council to obviously many, many, I'll call them administrative support in terms of Herd McElroy for a lot of nonprofits in this, uh, city. Great guy and sadly, uh, you know, debilitating illness is what ended up, uh, terminating his life a little shorter than we all wished. But sad to see him go, but he was a, somebody we should honor in this town for sure for his many, many contributions.
Absolutely.
Just wanted to mention that out publicly. Thank you, sir.
Rose?
Yeah, um, also, um, I wanted to, uh, just inform everybody of a very honorable award that I received. Um, and I want to thank Jeff, uh, for being in attendance at this award ceremony. I was able to also share it with the Martin Luther King CDC this past week. But, um, I am honored to have been awarded the 21st Annual Church Women United Ballot Women's Award. Um, I don't know if you all are familiar with the group, but it's a racially culturally inclusive women's movement that actually we are impassioned by the Holy Spirit to represent women, children, and families. Uh, this group is represented by over 25 million Protestant, Roman Catholics, Orthodox, and other Christian women as well. Um, also, there are 1,200 units locally and statewide, of which 44 of those units are located here in the city of Shreveport and Boja. Um, and I happen to be the representative selected from my church, the Lake Bethlehem Baptist Church, where Pastor Dennis Ray Everett Senior is pastor. I wanted to share that award with you. Most of you all don't know. I didn't share it with the mayor, and I'm sure the mayor would have recognized me today. But, uh, because I'm a bit shy there and I, I just didn't bring it to his attention. But, um, I, I am so humbled by it, and again, I give God the glory. And just wanted you to know that I am humbled to receive such a great honor.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna ask you if you would recognize our friend who we just mentioned earlier?
Well, let me, let me first of all start by, uh, acknowledging the award that was, uh, just announced by Councilwoman McCullough. My, my dear mother, uh, I don't know if she is a current member. I know for a long, very long time, she was very, uh, active in CWU. So, uh, commend you for that award, and it certainly is most deserving. Uh, and thank you, uh, uh, Councilman Shine for giving me the opportunity to ask all of you all who assembled, uh, to, uh, to send up prayers uh, for, uh, Dr. William Hines. Bill Hines, uh, was a, uh, the first African American ever, um, selected to be a member of the, uh, Shreveport Police Department. I believe his service to the city started in 1954. Uh, he served, uh, with great honor for a very long time, ultimately retiring with the rank of captain. Uh, but, uh, his health has taken a turn for the worse. Uh, and so I would ask that you all pray, uh, for his comfort, uh, as well as for, uh, the peace of mind, uh, of his wife, Mrs. Marie Hines, and all of his family, uh, his church, and all those who know and love him. So, uh, just get a chance tonight to lift him up in prayer because his is a legacy, uh, 40-plus years, no, 60-plus years, uh, in the making since that 1954 day when he first donned the uniform of a Shreveport police officer, uh, and walked the streets of this city. So we thank him, and, uh, we pray for him and ask that God's will be done.
Reverend Mayor, thank you. Okay, Ms. Farnell? Anybody have any questions for Ms. Farnell relating to property standards?
I did want to take this opportunity. I was contacted by, uh, a constituent, uh, Mr. Craig Lee, uh, who wanted to share some property standards concerns during this time.
Mayor, if we could get your technical, um, professional down, please?
Uh, we want to convert to the overhead right in front of you. You gonna put some, some overheads down?
He actually put it on a little, um...
Okay. Charles, could you come in, please?
These are concerns for Ms. Farnell?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Property standards.
Here you go.
Ms. Farnell has done a, a, a real good job of, um, listening to our situations. Her hands are countertied, um, hence why I talked to my councilman, Everson. Her hands are kind of tied, hence why I talked to my Councilman Everson. Um, I reside at 1035 Eustis Street in the Fairfield Historic District. And a few months ago, I made mention about a fire that almost destroyed my property and about three other properties in the Fairfield Historic District. If you can look right behind the brown privacy fence, you'll see fire damage that came directly from the house in the back of that, which is facing Prospect Street. And we had squatters that were actually in the house. We talked about a lot of these entities that are renting properties, but they don't actually own the properties. So I didn't have the photos before, so I wanted you all to actually see what ended up happening on that particular day. Now, the same week, another entity moved in and there is major issues with plumbing, which is creating issues with mosquitoes and also rats. And we have an issue with the house only having one electrical breaker, which is a fire hazard waiting to happen. And I've conveyed this to Ms. Farnell. And her hands are pretty much tied based on what is currently on the books. And I wanted you all to see this because not only have I invested roughly $100,000 in our property and Councilman Everson lives in our district. Mostly everybody over here have taken dilapidated properties and upgraded them and, which has enhanced the property value in the Fairfield Historic District. This one particular property is now an issue. The group that now moved in, they have a dog that is a mixed pit bull and boxer. This dog is not on the leash. We had a situation where we called the dog pound. And you barely can see it, but that particular photo there, the dog was actually about to go into one of the neighbor's houses on Eustis. And there you can see it right on the steps of the house. And we set a trap on my back property line and the dog fell into the trap. And this is a dangerous situation. Now, we caught the dog and the dog pound came out and the cage was empty. And the people released the dog, so they trespassed on my property, came, released the dog, tampered with parish property. And the police were called. And the police came out and literally acted as defense attorneys for the individuals. They wanted to know if we saw them remove the dog. It was like, no, we know that the dog lives there. And so now the situation has now elevated to some threats that have been made from that particular house. And all of this is resulting from, from property standards issues. And at the end of the day, part of the master plan called for reinvestment into the inner core. Now, we've done that. And if this is going on in the Fairfield Historic District where you have mansions right on Fairfield, we can only imagine what goes on in Queensborough, Moretown, Lakeside, Allendale. This is a critical issue because now we have individuals that have now moved in, parked dilapidated vehicles. Now, this particular dog has had 13 puppies. And now we're in a situation where we've now been threatening myself and my neighbor. Now, I don't have any problem defending myself, but this thing is about to get out of hand as a byproduct of what started out to be a simple property standards issue. A few years ago, when Mayor Glover pushed for the property standards where people could not park their cars on the front lawn, I was contacted by one of my colleagues and they said, well, Craig, I know you're gonna be against Mayor Glover on this. I was like, hell no. Because at the end of the day, what you do with your property impacts my property value. And this is going on throughout the city of Shreveport. And if we can't get this resolved, how do we expect people to actually invest into the inner core of this particular area? And I'm asking that the council really look at this. I would like to meet with the Property Standards Committee so that we can really get into this overall dynamic. Because the issue of fair housing is not just the issue between the landlord and the tenant. This is also involving other property owners in the area that are impacted by these particular issues. And I wanted to visually show what ended up happening on January 28th and has now continued to now April the 18th. And the dog is still being able to get out. There were some other photos, I'll bring them next meeting, to show that the dog is still out and we still haven't had a resolution. And Ms. Farnell has definitely listened to our calls, but her hands are almost tied because these things are going on throughout the entire city.
Mr. Lee, excuse me for cutting in, but Mr. Sibley, that's probably gonna come under your authority because it seems like it's gonna go from property standards to some other departments. And Ms. Farnell doesn't have the authority to actually reach out of her department. So Craig, I think you probably gonna have to meet with the CEO. And you all sit down and that's what he does.
Okay.
That's what, that's what we pay him, $200,000.
Okay.
I'm gonna look for that raise. Yeah.
Have you had an opportunity to speak with Director Everett Harris over at Caddo Parish Animal Control?
Yeah, and I'm actually gonna bring the photos to them next week.
Good, good. He's very helpful and he's good about responding. So I want to make sure, if y'all haven't been in touch, I'll be happy to get y'all in touch.
They did a good job, but what ended up happening, like I say, the gentleman called the police out and filed a report for property trespassing and property tampering. But when the police came out, they basically took this as a non-issue. And now what ends up happening, a property standards issue now gets into a threat of violence. And now somebody is gonna end up getting shot over this situation. And I'm sorry to tell you, we're not gonna allow people to come into our community after people have invested major dollars to now have them basically bringing property values back down.
Again, Mr. Lee, that's the gentleman sitting right over there.
Oh, yeah.
That's the gentleman who can pull people together in order to take care of your problem. And Ms. Farnell has done an excellent job, but she understands that sometimes it gets a little bit above her head when you got other situations coming in. And I think it would be best to let, and even pulling animal control in from the parish, if he calls animal control and get them together, they'll act a little bit quicker for him than they will for you. So that's, that's the gentleman over there.
And we're gonna continue to follow up with Mr. Craig and get with Mr. Sibley also. We'll follow up on it.
Right. Anybody else have any concerns for Ms. Farnell? If not, Ms. Farnell, you've done an excellent job. Appreciate it.
Young lady here raised her hand in the audience, Mr. Chairman.
We, we, hold it just one minute. We don't want to start just picking and choosing from the audience because if we do, we'll, 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 we'll get out. I mean, did you sign a slip to speak?
Yes, I did.
Well, if you do, I got you right here. That's the way we, that's the way we run it up here. We don't just pick and choose.
During the time that you talked about property standards, were there any...
No, we're gonna let you come up and when I call your name, you come up and you give your problem and if it's about property standards, we generally don't do what Mr. Lee did today. And I, and I think the vice chair just kinda slipped a little bit and I kinda slipped a little bit too. But we don't, we generally, and Mr. Lee understands that, we generally don't, right, we generally don't do that. We have an order that we follow. I got it. Mr. Sibley, do you have anything you...
Mr. Shine, on revenue collection, you all should have received it electronically. I guess the only thing I'll note is that the sales tax generally continue to show very positive movement and we're very pleased with that. I note in particular Hotel Motel is up as well as auto sales continue to be strong. We still haven't been able to identify specifically what's driving it beyond the Haynesville Shell activity. But when we get the breakdown, hopefully we can get a better idea. I will note that general merchandise went up on the last report. So apparently our citizens are out, you know, in the stores a little bit more. Specifically on the Mall St. Vincent tax, if you'll note, for this year, collections are at $165,536.04. For the past month, averaged about $36,500. So everything seems to be trending positively. What we expect to do on the administration side is sit down, as we did last year, after six months of collections, make some projections for the rest of the year. Visit with the mayor, visit with the council in terms of any adjustments to the budget that we may need to make. But with these trends, we're hopeful that we'll end up putting you guys in a much better position and looking at next year's budget.
We appreciate that. We appreciate that. Okay, Ms. Scott isn't here, is she?
She's upstairs, but.
Oh, I see her back there. Ms. Scott, do you have a few?
She's over there again.
She's up against the wall.
You have a few words you'd like to say?
We did email the bond forfeiture report for the month of May. We apologize, we got it out a little late this month, but all of you should have it in your emails if you have not had a chance to look at it yet.
Okay, anybody having any questions for Ms. Thompson?
Ms. Scott, I may have a report for us on the redistricting.
No, other than, I sent you all an email on Friday that I forwarded from Mr. Joyner that the Secretary of State's office has accepted the plan. The registrar voter is now working to get the voter rolls straight. So as far as the state of Louisiana is concerned, good news for us. The redistricting plan has been accepted and we're moving forward.
Ms. Scott, thank you. Anybody else, anybody else having a question for Ms. Scott? Ms. Scott, if not, thank you so very much. Okay, public hearing, Mr. Thompson?
Yes, Mr. Sibley, you want to?
Yes, we do. On the public hearing, City of Shreveport's endorsement of Petroleum Building LLC to participate in the benefits of Louisiana Restoration Tax Abatement Program, we have Ms. Ebony Mapp here from Community Development, who I believe is going to present on behalf of the administration. Please come forward, Ms. Mapp.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
So for, as, to summarize the program for the benefit of the public that is present and for those that are watching, I'd just like to say that the RTA, the Restoration Tax Abatement Program, is an incentive program established at the state level to encourage expansion, restoration, improvement, or development of existing structures in a qualifying economic district at the local level. The program allows commercial and residential property owners that seek to expand, restore, or otherwise physically improve an existing structure the opportunity to defer the post-improvement assessed tax amount for five years provided that the property taxes have not been paid on the improvements. This means that for five years after completion of the project, property owners will pay taxes based on the value of the property prior to the investments having been made. An RTA contract may be renewed for an additional five years. The project that I would like to present for your consideration today is at 619 Market Street in Shreveport, Louisiana.
There you go.
So this is the property for your consideration at 619 Market Street. This is the before picture, prior to any improvements. Please notice that there are some busted windows at the top, second, and third floor. Of course, there's also some covering on, above the awnings on the first level. And notice also where this lamp post is set, that has also been moved. In late 2012, the applicant applied for historic designations on, from the Louisiana Division of Historic Preservation and the National Park Service. In early 2013, the property was deemed to be of historic significance to the Downtown Development District by the state and the Certified Historic Structure for Rehabilitation Purposes at the federal level. The project is eligible for the state commercial tax credit program and the federal historic tax credit program pending completion of their proposed improvements. And I'd also like to note that because it is considered a historic piece of property, they are very limited in what they can do in terms of renovating or changing the exterior of the property. Built in 1932, the four-level, 6,062-square-foot property was purchased by Petroleum Building LLC in 2012. At the time of purchase, the property was unoccupied except for a small law office on the first floor that's shown there on the left side of the picture there. James G. Harris, the fourth, manager of Petroleum Building LLC, intends to rehabilitate the property to create expanding parking options on the first floor, reestablish the existing office space on the second and third floors, and offer a luxury-style apartment on the fourth floor, replace systems such as the HVAC, and beautify the exterior. Total project costs are estimated to be approximately $500,000 once complete. Today, they are requesting an abatement from the city calculated to be $417 per year for the next five years totaling $2,085, excuse me. And I'd like to show you the improvements to date. So as I mentioned, you noticed the pockmarks in the, excuse me, the broken windows on the first and second floor and the windows above the awning and then the lamp post. That's post, that's prior to the improvements. And this is what it looks like currently. The windows have been replaced that were broken. And then the barriers across the windows above the awning have been also removed. The lamp post, which was here originally, has been moved over to allow for a garage door and a garage, parking on the first level. And this is what the exterior looked like prior to improvement. It's worn down. They've painted the exterior and also installed some security lighting here. You can see here in the middle of the building. And this is the back where they've also repainted the back and they've removed what was a mechanical storage unit on the side here. And of course, they've put a, because this is where the exit is from the parking that they've installed on the first level, this is the exit to their back lot. And this is just a floor plan to show what the project looked like. I don't know if you can really see there, but these are the office, these are the, the, the commercial spaces on the left-hand side and this is the open parking garage. So there's about enough room for about seven to eight spaces there. And this is what it looks like. You can't really tell from this picture, but it is quite large. Like I said, about seven or eight spaces can fit there. And that back part is the door that goes out to the back and then this is the back lot shown from above. So as I mentioned, the exterior improvements include repainting, replacing exposing front windows, installation of security lighting, removal of an exterior mechanical room, and the addition of a roll-up parking door in the front and back, refinishing the parking lot, the relocation of a lamp post, and adding a curb cut. This is the layout of the offices on the second floor. And the third floor, they are fairly similar. The offices on those floors, they expect to keep them as they are, but they just expect to repaint the walls and then redo the floors. And so this finally is the fourth floor. This is what it looked like prior to the current owners owning the property. The previous owner gutted it and then left it unfinished. This is what it looked like when they purchased the property. As I mentioned, they expect to turn it into a, well, they're in the process of turning it into a luxury-style apartment, which has three bedrooms, three bathrooms, an exercise room, a den, and an office as well. So this is what it looks like right now. This, as I mentioned, it's, they're in the process of making the improvements. And this is what is expected to look like in the future. I don't know if you can see that, but that's the proposed layout. And that's all I have at this time. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, do we have anyone that would like to speak in favor of the tax abatement at this particular time? Anyone in the audience and anyone, any council members?
I'll just say, good job to Ebony and I appreciate her work always on these restoration tax abatements. I know in my district, I have become familiar with this type of a project because there are a number of them due to the nature of having older historic properties that are eligible for this project, but I know some other council members may not be quite as familiar with an RTA. But it is something that we've approved a number of times in the past and it's a great way to get people to go back into some of these vacant buildings and really put substantial investment into them. This particular one will be a single-family residency on the top floor, as Ms. Mapp discussed, as well as space for the expansion of businesses and the retention of the law office, but adding some parking, which is much needed in that part of our downtown. So, you know, I think as representative of that area, I can say this is a very positive project.
Do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition? If not, Mr. Sibley, I'm going to close this public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Thompson, do we have any legislation to be added to the agenda?
We have two resolutions to be considered. One is a resolution suspending the effects of certain provisions of Chapter 10 relative to alcoholic beverages and Chapter 106 relative to zoning for property located at 6 to 614 Yuri Drive in celebration of the college bash on Friday, May the 16th, 2014. And the other is a resolution number 92, authorizing the mayor to execute grand documents with the United States Department of Justice. The second one, we received in time to be placed on the agenda. The clerks, our office, just simply did not get it on and we would ask that you would consider that. The other, we believe is similar to one's resolutions that we've done throughout the year.
Okay, we're going to take these one at a time. Is it anyone in here that would like to speak in favor of adding new legislation to the agenda? If so, perhaps it's kind of like when you're doing a wedding, speak now or forever hold your peace. If not, do we have anybody who would like to speak in opposition of adding these two pieces of legislation to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion. It's been moved by Councilman Mike Carvin, seconded by Councilman Jeff Everson, to add the first piece of legislation to the agenda. All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. This piece of, the first...
Ms. McCullough, please. Thank you.
The first piece has been added by a 7-0 vote. Councilman Carvin, I'll entertain a motion to add the second piece of legislation. It's been moved by Councilman Carvin, seconded by Councilman Everson, to add the second piece of legislation to the agenda. All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. The second piece has been added with a 7-0 vote. Okay, now we are down to public comments. I believe the first we have is my good friend and a good-moving shaker in the Martin Luther King area, Ms. Irma D. Rogers.
Good afternoon. Irma Rogers, 1920 Meeshute Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71107. To Chairman Shine, Vice Chair Jeff Everson, Mayor Glover, CEO Dale Sibley. I addressed the council on February 25th about the streets and drainage issues in the Martin Luther King area. I was asked and requested by my organization, MLK Community Development Corporation, to do so. I understand today, a resolution number 84 is before the council for voting concerning David Rains Road and Russell Roads. We took a bus tour with some citizens and residents and ministers from our area with the mayor to address these issues and show them to some of our other citizens to make them understand what we were talking about when I brought the 25 slides. I think it was 26 to be exact. If this will help to make sure that renovations and upgrades occur to these streets, because these were two of the major streets and have been for several years now since our city councilwoman, Mrs. McCullough, had quarterly meetings with us. They were some of the first streets that were put on her agenda for renovation, Russell Road and David Rains, because they're major conduits into our community. So if this will help to make sure, ensure, that these streets are provided and leveled to be concrete completely. David Rains is, but Russell Road is not. But if this will help, then I am here to support that issue. So I'm hoping and asking for your vote of approval for this resolution. It will help the upgrades and encourage the people in my area. Also, it was reported by a city councilwoman that number 87 she was introducing, because many of the projects that affect our streets and drainage issues are being held up because of the differences between the council, the mayor, and our city financial advisor. I am not sure on all of these issues, but if this will help to move any of the projects along so that we can get what we're asking for and have been waiting for for some 35 years, and that's the resurfacing of so many of our streets. In the parish, as I explained in February, they were not concrete, okay? So they were primarily asphalt. So so many of them have not been upgraded for several years and the people in our area are really concerned about this. We get complaints from so many different areas in the, in our town. Basically, we're a large enough to be a town. We have grown since 2000 census to 2010 census and I think we were the area in Shreveport that grew the most on that census. That's my understanding from Community Development. We've had more than 900 new housing starts in the MLK area since 2005. So we are really in need... I'm sorry, I will wrap up now. We are really in need of the streets and drainage issues in this area to be addressed. So if there's any common ground to help move along our finances for the city, I hope that in the judgment of all of you gentlemen and our women, city councilwomen, that you will come to some kind of common ground to help us move along these projects so that our citizens may be insured of the same services across the city. Thank you so much.
Okay, we have Ms... I'm sorry, did anybody want to ask Ms. Rogers a question?
I wanted to say thank you, Ms. Rogers, for coming. And I see you brought some of the other members of the MLK City. So glad to see you all here.
I'm going to get to them.
Right. And Ms. B. Bailey is gone. She had to leave. B. Bailey. She turned her name in to speak, Ms. Bailey. She's secretary for the CDC, but she had to leave. Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Hughley? I mean, I'm sorry, Humphrey? I guess, I'm sorry. This is Thelma? Is it a Ms. Thelma back there? Ms. Thelma, did I miss your name? What is that last name? Humphrey, that's what I thought.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
Come up to the mic. Yeah, right there.
Mr. Shine, I'm one of the ladies from the Martin Luther King area that we were talking about the Davis-Rains Road and the Russell Road that we would like to have this minor interior did in our area. We were requesting that the DOT, D and the NF COG would come and give us some kind of work on our roads and streets and things, drainage there in the Martin Luther King area.
Thank you, Ms. Thelma.
Thank you.
All right, we have Mr. Ron... I thought, Ron? Your friend is sitting here ready, listening to you.
Ron Heforn, 2260 East Burke Tunes, speaking on the fireworks ordinance 36, I believe, fostered by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. Thank you for the privilege, Mayor Glover and city councilman and chairman and vice chairman. I thank you. Quickly, I want to add to, I think if you still have your list, I want to add to number four concerning the percentages that possibly could be a loss, 35 to 40 percent. I want to address it from a different standpoint. It's a point of which Mr. Mayor, excuse me, Mayor Glover made concerning entrepreneurship. If we lose 35 to 40 percent of our sales revenue, that will cost us 30 to 45 percent of our labor, summer jobs to our high school teachers, college students. It is a possibility. Quickly, about entrepreneurship. There was a young individual, his name was Joel Trammell. He worked for us, me, at that Little Green Patch just east of Grambling, Louisiana Tech, where we had a fireworks stand just outside the city limits, where one of my favorite customers, Coach Eddie Robinson, would come in with his children, his grandchildren, instinctively giving those children patriotism. And in that, working with me is Joel Trammell, who was a tennis player and his father was a professor at Louisiana Tech. And Coach Eddie Robinson would always tease Joel. He said, "Look, you need to come play tennis for Grambling." And Joel would say, "You know what my daddy would say." Now, what has that got to do with entrepreneurship? Joel Trammell called me 2010. He said, "Ron Heforn, I just want to let you know that I used your name." I said, "Okay, Joel. I hope it was good." He said, "It was. I won in 2010 the nation's entrepreneurial award achievement. I beat everybody else in 2010." I said, "Well, that's wonderful, Joel." He said, "But I've got some good news and I've got some bad news." My bad news is I don't have a job. I said, "Well, come on by the house, we'll talk." He said, "Oh, no. That's okay." Because I sold my company for $43 million. Look it up, Nat Qos, San Antonio. I say that, Mayor Glover, so that Ms. Fields pursue your...
Mr. Chairman.
Award.
Ron, I don't mean in a harm. The mayor know I've said this before. These are the folks who are sitting up here who are going to have to vote on what you want.
Yes, sir.
The mayor's just sitting there listening.
Yes, sir.
So you might want to say, Councilman Oliver Jenkins?
Yes.
You know, that might help you out a little bit.
Thank you very much, Joe Shines. And I want to let you know, Joe Shines, that I wear a size 10 shoe and I promise you I won't drag my feet in trying to help the council resolve this issue.
That's why, that's why I try to give you a little advice, you know, to make...
Thank you.
Bring it to the council and, because...
You can well, you can well, you can well see...
I'm out of it now, continue.
You can well see that this is not my expertise.
Right. That's why I'm trying to help you out a little bit.
Thank you so much. So, I said that from the entrepreneurial aspect, Councilman Jenkins, there's a good possibility that jobs, summer jobs, could be lost. I checked with fire prevention. There was 54 permanents issued last year and that would mean there would be a loss of maybe three to four positions at each location. That could be almost 200 jobs that could possibly be lost. Food for thought. Now, you have not because you asked not. I would like to ask the council to vote no on the proposition or the ordinance as it is written and as it is amended, please. If they don't, I will help in any form or fashion. I promise. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, any comments by any council member on that particular piece of legislation? If not, Mr. Don Vorey, please come forward, give the council your name and address. I know you are a good Baptist, so you probably going to need more than three minutes, but you know, at the end of three minutes, we'll extend if you need some more time.
Thank you. And out of respect for the council, I will stay within my three minutes. Let me take this opportunity to thank the City of Shreveport for allowing me to serve as co-chair of Paint Your Heart Out this year. I'm really pleased with that effort and, you know, 39 houses. The previous year, we did 75. I've been asked to co-chair again and our goal is to 100 houses.
Wow.
And so we did do a great job of fundraising, almost $50,000 of private dollars that we regenerate and we did come in under budget. So I know y'all must be pleased with that. And by that, I want to segue to what I came up to speak about and that's the financial health of this city and doing what's in the best interest of the city in terms of the quality of life. I'm here to support the passage of Resolution 87 and I beg of you, I plead of you, to let all histrionics, all past dealings, et cetera, let them go and let's do what's in the best interest of the, of the city. I'm reminded of a story in the Bible where there was a dispute between two women and whose child this was. And what the king says was, "Let's split the baby." One mother supposedly was willing to split the baby. We cannot have that. Please don't let that be the outcome today. Take actions so that we can do what's in the best interest of the city. Thank you.
Okay, we have the Reverend Dr. Theron Jackson. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to all the council members, mayor, of the citizens who are here. Let me first preface my statement by saying thank you. I know it probably doesn't, it's not said as often as it should be, but I do understand. So I thank you for your commitment and your service, your time to serve. The W's and the L's don't mean as much, but I appreciate your service and the things you do, the sacrifices you make to do it. I wanted to just say, piggybacking on what Dr. said, he stole my split the baby analogy. I shouldn't have told him that earlier. But in all seriousness, I recognize that you have both a fiscal and a fiduciary responsibility and that these decisions are not made, you know, in a vacuum and that you've got, you know, several things to consider in doing this. I just wanted to know that whenever, as a citizen, we look at this and we say that we went out, as you all asked us to do, to go out and make a decision in 2011. And we went out to do that because you said that's what, that's our responsibility as citizens and we went out to do that in hopes that, and once we did that, that that would represent our voice and that would represent what our desire was for this council. As you know, from that point, it becomes your responsibility to take care of that for us and we trust you, still do. I do, let me say, to take care of that. What the record has been, and some of you have served two terms and others, this is a first term, but the record has been, and I might say a good record, for those of us who keep up and keep score, that the fiscal status of the city is better now than some 12 years ago when I had the privilege of serving as well. Wish we had had the kind of fiscal scenario that you have in this city now. And so I think you get a lot of kudos, perhaps in private, for the work that you've done to make this city healthy from a fiscal perspective. But those of us who are keeping score wonder why there is a sticking point in this one area. We've done well. You all know. I don't have to tell you. I certainly don't rise to inform you of what you already know, that there's a sticking point. And according to Resolution 87 that's on the agenda for possible introduction today, that there is already, as I appreciated, money in escrow. And I heard people talking, just, you know, watercooler talk, that there's an opportunity for, I mean, the idea of maybe lawsuit when there's the money that's already there. Many of us who are out in our neighborhoods could care less about, you know, the sausage making, if you will. But what we are concerned more about is that there are streets that need to be taken care of, that there are parks, there are other things. Some of us have sat by quietly and not said a thing as dogs to get a park. But people in Moretown, people in Queensborough, people in Broadmoor and other places who may want a park as well, don't have the option for a park. a park as well, don't have the option for a park. And I don't mean that to be sensational, I say that to say that it's really true, that those are words that are going on in our community, people are saying things about that, they're not, they don't say, I don't, I don't suggest that they're saying that about you, they just say that about Shreveport. And whether we see it that way or not, when people make these comparisons between Shreveport and Boja City, which, again, I think can be unhealthy in a lot of ways as well, but when they talk about us as a city...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Just, I'll finish. It just, when they talk about us as a city, these are the things that people look at, and I don't mean just look at us locally, but on a national, from a national perspective, we start talking about a city whose bond rating, whose health, has seemingly gotten better. It almost seems, again, that good deeds go not unpunished. And so, I want to just ask us, if we would, to consider what we need to do, and if there is something that we don't know as citizens that is necessary to move forward and to be progressive and that will, that will guarantee that we continue the same path that we've seen us go progressively over the course of the last six to eight years. If we can, if, if eighty-seven does not get us where we need to go, my question then to the council is, what does get us there? And then, how long do we take to get there? Because ultimately, it's not about the names involved in this situation, it's not about the seven or eight personalities around this dais, but it's really about people who simply say, "What about our streets? You asked us to vote in 2011, we went out to vote, we did our part, and what we asking is for you to simply do your part, whatever that might be, however that might, however that might be met, met out, if you will, just so we can have some progress, because it looks bad for us to be three years later, never having made decisions about these things that seem to be, to those of us who are simply citizens, such simple issues, at least on the surface." Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you to the council.
Thank you. Is this Armstrong? Please come forward. I got...
That's it?
Oh, that's okay.
That's it?
Please come forward.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, he's, he's on that zoning issue.
On the zoning?
He wants to speak on that zoning issue.
Yeah.
In North...
Let me, when he comes up, I'll ask him what, what he's here for. You're here to speak on a zoning matter?
I, I am concerning Mr. Vance.
Okay. I have, take your seat, I have, I just, I had you slip here to, to speak.
I was just gonna say that Mr. Charles Vance has a zoning appeal, it concerns Resolutions forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five, and the other two people that we notified was Mr. Armstrong and a Mr. Jamie Wine, so I don't know if all of them are here, but they are probably gonna want to speak on those issues.
Okay, what we'll do is wait until those issues come up, and we'll let you speak at that particular time. Let me put this right here. Is this Irma?
I think that's right.
Hold on just one minute. Is this Irma Fappe?
Here.
What are you, what, you're here to speak on?
I'm here to speak on the future of the city of our city.
And not right now, you, you come in at, at the next, I just want to be sure. Jennifer Jones, is Ms. Jones here? What are you, what are, you, you're here to speak on?
Encouraged owner to do so. Since that did not occur, what we ended up doing, now it's a matter of, it's just sitting open. Her wall is removed from, um, from the remodeling or trying to repair the property by the owners, um, by the owner's contractor. So, it's left her house all open. Now, it looks like a war zone. Nothing is being done. So, what we did was, we ended up writing it up for demolition rehab. We sent the owner a notice. On our notice letters, it states that upon receipt of the notice, the owner has ten days to file an appeal with Property Standards. It also says on the demolition that you can receive a thirty-day temporary permit. If you have not completed the repairs within that thirty-day period of that permit, then you must come before the Property Standards Board. After the thirty days, that permit will be pulled. If the owner continues to rehab or do work on that property, what's going to happen is that, um, those, the, the owner could be fined. On, uh, the, the property owner with the demolition, this date-
Let me, let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
Is it anything that you can do to help her?
We're doing that in the sense that after the thirty days, if he has not finished it, it's gonna go before the Property Standards Board. We're following the process.
Okay.
It's been since two thousand and nine. They came out and they declared it bad in two thousand and ten. They called, when I called them back, they said, "We can't find him. He's got homes all over the place." And I, I'm not being impatient. Ms. Farnell has been wonderful, but y'all, she's, her hands are tied by these silly rules. The rules are making up, because he's gotta file another thirty days. She totally understands my predicament, but she is being held by a thirty-day rule. If they just decide a demolition, if there's another thirty days. He's had since two thousand and nine, but this start of this project started when?
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was four months ago.
The house has been open for five months.
We tried to cite the owner in two thousand and nine for this same issue. He was living in, in Florida. And it was sometime before we found out. So, that's why we, that's why we weren't able to issue him a citation. Since that time, we sent a letter.
Let me, let me say this.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Dale, 'cause we not gonna sell this right here.
No, sir.
Is it, is there any way you and Ms. Farnell and the city attorney can get with this lady right here and see what can be worked out? Because we not gonna sell this, we not gonna sell this right here to council.
But I need to make people aware, because the rules, I mean, this is like, I thought a catch twenty-two was just a statement in a book. I'm living with it. You know, I had reassurance from Jack Lunt about this madness that it was, no, no city permits were gonna be issued. Only by the grace of God did I go in there today to talk about another rental property that I have that said, "Oh, you just missed Charlie Corks Glasscock. He just got a, a building." So, what he's done is, he's put a, on the townhouse, he put two boards, "I have this much room. There's no way to fix my property." If he is continuing to do this-
I, I understand what you're saying, but I'm still trying to tell you that, you see what you're still cause here? Right, we can't help you right, right now. If you get with Ms. Farnell, Mr. Sibley, and the city attorney, and they decide what needs to be done-
Okay.
And if the council needs to get involved, we would do that.
Okay.
But, we just don't jump involved with, in something that has not been vetted first by the administration.
Okay.
So, they will, they will, they would do that. Ms. Farnell, would, would you take over to Mr. Sibley?
Yes, sir. We will do that.
What, what's the street address on Flag?
Fifty-five oh-nine Flagstone.
Fifty-five oh-nine?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Flagstone.
Flagstone. By the lake, Willow Point.
Peninsula that goes down into close, like-
Mm-hmm.
Give them the address and they'll come by and check it out. These two councils know.
Yeah, sure. I'll write my address on there.
No, I mean, just come up whisper, just come up whisper, come up whisper to them. And, and they'll come by, they asking you where you live.
Let me, let me take half this one.
It sounds like it's, I think it'd be pretty odd.
It sounds like true. Tell the difference.
Yeah.
Recognize the problem.
Okay, uh-
I mean, it's great, but I'm, I'm not even sure.
Sounds like it's-
Uh, Ms. Chairman?
Yeah.
Uh, before we move on, one thing I'm gonna ask that, that both Julie and, and Terry spent some time doing, 'cause this may be an area that has to come back-
Right.
-to council for some consideration.
Right.
And that is, uh, I, I know it's uncommon for a city like Shreveport where you have these common wall issues, because we have more of our individual ranch-style homes, but, you know, you probably have more of this in larger cities and what have you. But, is there, uh, anything that we need to do? That's part of the feedback I'm asking from staff. Is there anything that we need to give consideration in terms of recommending to council that may give us some better set of tools to be able to deal with this kind of situation? And obviously, as she has indicated, has a five-year history on it, so-
That's why I said, let, 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 let her get together with them, because we can spend another hour and a half going back and forth. And, uh, and we still would not have, uh-
So, you say how it comes back and let them-
Uh, we have no confirmation of a, of a postman's today. That's good. Um, Mr. Thompson, we're backing your hands at this point.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, you wanna hear the zoning appeal when we get to those ordinances?
Please. Please.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we under section eight. Uh, at this time, the resolution authorizing fifty-six eighty-seven Jefferson Page Road to connect to the water and sewer system of the city of Shreveport.
What is the pleasure?
Some o.
Been moved by Councilwoman Rose McCullough, second by Councilwoman Mike Carvin. Did it right? All in favor vote yes. Opposes no.
We have no ordinances.
This, this piece of, huh? Piece of legislation passes with a seven-o vote. Okay?
We have no ordinances. We're on the session now in regular general legislation. Uh, resolutions on second reading and final passage, of which will require only one reading. Number seventy is a resolution stating the city of Shreveport's endorsement of Petroleum Building LLC to participate in the benefits of Louisiana Restoration Tax Program.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson, second by Councilman Mike Carvin. Any questions or discussion at this point? If not, all in favor vote yes. Opposes no. This piece of legislation passes with a seven-o vote.
Number eight is a resolution supporting and encouraging the adoption of HB ten ninety-seven of the twenty-fourteen regular session of the legislature.
Some o.
It's been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson. Do I get a second?
Certainly.
Okay, it's been seconded by the Honorable Jenkins. Oliver Jenkins, the young Jenkins. All in favor vote yes. Opposes no. This piece of legislation passes with a seven-o vote.
Number eighty-one.
Did you vote, Mr. Everson?
Yeah. Did not take?
Okay.
Number eighty-one approves the budget for the Cato's Shreveport Sales and Use Tax Commission for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty-fourteen.
What is the pleasure?
Some o.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Ron Webb, second by-
Second.
Councilwoman Mike Carvin. All in favor vote yes. Opposes no. This piece of legislation passes with a seven-o vote.
Number eighty-two declares a citizen's interest in certain adjudicated property as surplus.
Been moved by the chair, second by, uh, Councilman Everson. All in favor vote yes. Opposes no. This piece of legislation passes with a seven-o vote.
Number eighty-three also declares certain adjudicated properties to be surplus, which will authorize the mayor to sell the city of Shreveport's tax interests.
What is the pleasure?
Some o.
Been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mike Carvin. All in favor vote yes. Opposes no. This piece of legislation passes with a seven-o vote.
Sam Jenkins?
Number eighty-four requests the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development and ILCOG to change the functional classifications of Russell Road and David Rains Road from minor collection urban to minor arterial urban. To request the administration to prepare and submit the necessary applications and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. There's one amendment. Would you like for me to read the amendment?
Please.
Uh, it adds a be it further resolved clause to state that neither the application nor the decision on the application will affect the funding or the construction schedule for approved street construction projects.
Some o.
Been moved by Councilwoman Rose McCullough, second by Councilman Jeff Everson on the amendment. All in favor vote yes. Opposes no. The amendment passes with a seven-o vote. Now, we're back to the legislation as amended. Can I get a motion?
First.
Rose?
Some o.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman-
We thought it was the amendment first.
Yeah, we want to-
Rose McCullough on a piece of legislation as amended. It's been seconded by Councilman Jeff Everson. All in favor vote yes. Opposes no. Uh, legislation passes as amended with a seven-o vote.
Uh, number eighty-five was adopted earlier. We're now, we can, uh, the council can consider, one of the resolutions that was added on is ninety-one. It's a resolution suspending the effects of certain provisions of chapter ten relative to alcoholic beverages and chapter one oh-six relative to zoning.
It's been moved by Councilman Mike Carvin, second by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. All in favor vote yes. Opposes no. This piece of legislation passes with a seven-o vote.
We're now at the introduction of resolutions.
And we're gonna take these one by one, Mr. Thompson?
We will read them one at a time-
Yeah.
-to council to act on. Number eighty-seven suspends the effect of section twenty-six dash two eleven of the Code of Ordinances and authorizes the city of Shreveport to retain the services of Grigsby and Associates for the limited purpose of providing financial advisory services for the sale of the remaining general obligation bonds approved by the voters of the city of Shreveport.
It's been moved by Councilwoman McCullough. Do I get a second?
I'll second.
I'd be happy to second.
Okay, it's been seconded by Councilman, uh-
Carvin.
Mike Carvin and Oliver Jenkins. All in favor vote yes. This resolution, uh, fails with a four against and three for.
Number eighty-eight authorizes the mayor to execute an amendment to the agreement with the Northwest Louisiana Youth Golf and Education Foundation, uh, doing business as first tee of Northwest Louisiana.
Some o.
It's been moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins.
Second.
Do I get a second? Second by Councilman Jeff Everson. All in favor vote yes. Opposes no. This piece of legislation passes with a seven-o vote to be introduced.
Number eighty-nine authorizes acceptance of sixteen thousand dollars from the Community Foundation for the Paint Your Heart Out program.
It's been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson, second by Councilman Mike Carvin. Uh, at this point, uh, Doc, you all have been doing an excellent job with Paint Your Heart Out. Just keep up the good works and next year I got a paintbrush and I'll show you what an old painter can do. All in favor vote yes. Opposes no. This piece of legislation is introduced with a seven-o vote.
You can come over to my house Saturday if you want.
Oh, Mike.
You need to go practice, I mean, you're-
Yeah.
We're gonna keep you in, in the game there.
Y'all gonna, y'all gonna work me to death. Okay?
Number ninety-eight authorizes a waiver of rental fees for Riverview Park Thursday through Sunday, May the twenty-ninth through June the first for the USA Wakeboard National Security.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson, second by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. All in favor vote yes. Opposes no. Uh, it passes with a seven-o vote. For introduction.
Mr. Chairman, please cast your vote.
I'm sorry, I mashed it.
Councilman Chairman, we'd love to see you out there and show us a couple tricks on those wakeboards.
Well, well, I don't know at this stage, uh, the-
Mr. Chairman.
Legislation will be introduced and will lay off-
Chairman, we have one other-
Yeah, one other?
Resolution ninety-two that was added to the agenda. It authorizes the mayor to execute grand documents with the United States Department of Justice.
Some o.
It's been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson. Do I, can I get a second? Second by Councilwoman Rose McCullough. All in favor vote yes. Opposes no. Uh, the legislation passes for introduction. Uh, at this point, the legislation will be introduced. It will lay off for two weeks. At that time, it may, or it may not be voted upon. Mr. Thompson, let's move on.
We are now at the introduction of ordinances. The first is forty-six. It, uh, will levy a tax of eight and sixty-four one hundredths mils per dollar on all property subject to ad lorm taxation within the bounds of the downtown development district of the city.
What's the pleasure?
Some o.
It's been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson, second by Councilman Mike Carvin. All in favor vote yes. Opposes no. Legislation passes, uh, to be introduced with a seven-o-
Mr. McCullough, please cast your vote.
With a seven-o vote.
Number forty-seven will levy various taxes totaling, uh, seventeen and sixty-five one hundredths mils per dollar on all property subject to ad lorm taxes within the city of Shreveport for twenty-fourteen in the amounts and for the purposes described in the document.
Some o.
It's been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson, second by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. All in favor vote yes. Opposes no. Uh, legislation is introduced with a seven-o vote.
Number forty-eight will levy a tax of twenty-two and five one hundredths mils per dollar on all property subject to ad lorm taxation within the city of Shreveport.
Some o for introduction.
Been moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, second by Councilman, uh, Jeff Everson.
Sure.
All right. All in favor vote yes. Opposes no. This piece of legislation has been introduced with a seven-o vote.
Mr. Oliver Jenkins, please.
Number forty-nine amends the twenty-fourteen general fund budget. Uh, this is a SPAR amendment, SPAR budget.
Some o for introduction.
It's been moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, second by Council, by the chair. All in favor vote yes. Opposes no. This piece of legislation has been introduced with a seven-o vote.
Number fifty amends the twenty-fourteen Community Development Special Revenue Fund budget.
Some o.
It was discussed yesterday, I believe.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson, second by, uh, Sam Jenkins, Councilman Sam Jenkins. All in favor vote yes. Opposes no. This piece of legislation, uh, will be introduced with a seven-o vote.
Number fifty-one will close and abandon a fifty-foot wide portion of Independence Avenue running between South Fairway Drive and Cloverdale and the Country Club Heights Subdivision Unit Five located in Section Eight Township Seventeen North Range Fourteen West.
It's been moved by Councilman-
Some o.
Oliver Jenkins, second by the chair. All in favor vote yes. Opposes no. This piece of legislation has been introduced. A seven-o vote.
Number fifty-two authorizes the mayor to execute a contract with Dr. David Clemmons to grant access and permission to plant and maintain live oak trees on the east right-of-way of Cresswell Avenue.
Some o.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Mike Carvin, second by the young, uh, Councilman Oliver Jenkins. All in favor vote yes. Opposes no. This piece of legislation has been added with a seven-o vote.
Number fifty-three amends the twenty-fourteen capital improvements budget. Uh, it moves funds from various projects that are not ready to be completed to projects that are ready to be completed.
Been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson, second by the chair. All in favor vote yes. Opposes no. This piece of legislation is introduced with a seven-o vote.
Mr. Chairman, we also have the introduction of an ordinance that cannot be adopted prior to June the tenth. It authorizes an amendment to the agreement and lease with MB Industries LLC and otherwise provides with respect thereto.
It's been, been moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, second by Councilman Mike Carvin. All in favor vote yes. Opposes no. This piece of legislation has been introduced with a seven-o vote.
Yeah. Interruption if I may.
Please.
Yeah, I'm sorry about yesterday, but do we have any details of what is actually being amended in the lease? And I don't need the answer now, we've got three sessions to go on this, but at least I couldn't find it in the documents. So, if we could put that down as a reference point for next time.
It's gonna come to us.
Okay.
Okay, Dale.
That was discussed yesterday.
Okay.
Introduced by title.
I'm not saying there's some miss, I'm just saying I looked for it, I couldn't find it, and I'm, I probably missed it yesterday.
Okay, uh-
I'm foremending it.
I think if you go by the mayor's office, he'll be more than happy to have somebody have to explain that to you, Councilman.
Councilman Shawn.
We, we're gonna explain it to everybody all at the same time, it's true.
Well, I think most of us are kinda satisfied with it, but I just wanted to make sure that Councilman Oliver Jenkins, you know how it is, Mr. Mayor. You wanna make sure that everybody-
If you read this current lease, you, you wouldn't be satisfied with it. If you read this current lease, you wouldn't be satisfied with it.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm-
He's getting, he's kinda kidding with you, Councilman Shawn. There's, there's some missing information there for us in the electoral cap.
Well, he, he'll get it to you and you'll get it to us. Thank you very much. Okay, the following, uh, legislation has been introduced. It will lay off for two weeks. At that time, it may or may not be voted upon.
Mr. Chairman, we're now at the ordinances on second reading and final passage. First is number thirty-five. It authorizes the mayor to execute all necessary instruments to effect the exchange of certain immovable property owned by the city of Shreveport for certain immovable property owned by Louisiana CVS Pharmacy LLC.
Some o.
There's one amendment. Um, this amendment makes certain changes to both the fact sheet and the ordinance to clarify the purpose for the exchange of the property with Louisiana CVS Pharmacy LLC, as well as provides information on the legal authority of the property exchange.
It's been moved by Councilman Mike Carvin on the amendment, second by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor vote yes. Opposes no. The amendment passes with a seven-o vote and we're ready for the-
Some o.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Mike Carvin on the legislation as amended, second by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. All in favor vote yes. Opposes no. This piece of legislation-
Mr. Carvin.
Passes as amended with a seven-o vote.
Number thirty-six amends and reenacts Article Four of Chapter Thirty of the Code of Ordinances relative to fireworks. There are two amendments, Amendment Number One and Amendment Number Two. Um, I believe that only one of these probably should be adopted.
I'm gonna make a motion on Amendment Number Two.
Um, this amendment adds December the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth to the days on which fireworks may be discharged.
If I could, I'd like to offer a substitute motion that we put this off just for two more weeks.
Second.
Simply because I've been contacted by a few other vendors who could not be here today. Um, I don't wanna push it back and get us into July fourth holiday, uh, but I'd like to be sure that everybody that wants to weigh in on it can.
That's the chair.
Motion by Councilman Mike Carvin in order to postpone for two weeks, second by the Honorable Rose McCullough. Uh, it's been postponed for two weeks with a seven-o vote.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we had an amendment from Mr. Charles Vance concerning, uh, ordinances forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five. Uh, it's property on the east side of North Market Street, two hundred and fifty feet north of Pullman Road.
I know.
Um, I believe that there were three people, Mr. Vance, Mr., uh, Wine, and Mr. Armstrong, who were notified of the appeal, and I believe you indicated that you wanted to take, uh-
Yes.
At this time.
Why don't we let Mr. Vance come up? Is Mr. Vance here? Vance, why don't you come up and state your-
Is he, is he okay? Uh, I'm Chuck Vance. Uh, I live at thirty-six sixteen North Market Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven oh seven. Uh, I'm here to ask for a rezone. Um, I, I'm in a commercial spot now. I'm in a B-one. Uh, there's a property that's north of me that's B-one, and a property that's south of me, B-one. I'm right on Highway seventy-one, which is North Market. What I was wanting to do is maybe try to sell a few vehicles there. Um, like I said, there's commercial all along there, residential. Uh, the only people I've, I've spoke with around it have been the homeowners associations of the Highlands. I went to one of their meetings. My neighbors to the north, no problem. My neighbors to the south, I mean, no problem. Uh, I went to the homeowners association meeting in, uh, on the Highlands. Uh, I met with them. They weren't real excited about vehicle sales there. Um, I brought up a, I did mention selling, my wife was interested in selling some pottery, and the ladies got a little excited about that and they sorta liked it. So, anyway, I did get the privilege of meeting, uh, one of the, uh, vets, uh, from Vietnam, and he, he had a problem. He said he didn't wanna back out of his driveway and be able to see a used lot along seventy-one. And he's right on the edge of the five hundred feet where they send out the, the letters. Uh, and the reasoning for him backing out of his driveway right there is he backs that into seventy-one, which is, I don't think there's probably two driveways along that way that, uh, that are able to back out. But anyway, uh, this is what I'm asking for. Uh, my wife's had a, a little health issue. Our home's there. Uh, we, we've done a subdivision. We were able, hopefully we could live in the house, run a small business up front. As I stated, uh, we wouldn't have over five vehicles for sale there.
Mr. Vance, I believe you want, or you have divided your property into two lots, Lot One and Lot Two, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And it's on Lot One that you want to change from B-one to B-three so that you can sell the automobiles?
Um, I think we could go for a, maybe a B-two E. Is that possible? I mean, it's, that was some of the concern for the Highlands area, was that if we did a B-three, there may be some type of, for a liquor store or whatever. And I said, "Look, that's not what, that's not what we're after." Uh, I'm just trying to, to take care of my family. I, you know, I work for myself. I wanna be able to use the property. I mean, the, you can see the, the potential there. And, uh, like I said, i- if it's a B-two E that, that would get me to where I needed to be, that's all I'm after.
Uh, I believe that you also, on Lot Two, you wanted to go from B-one to a residential zoning, is that right?
Yes, sir, in the back.
Jane, you wanna come and say what or two? Uh, let us know what, what the MPC actually did.
I, I do wanna just clarify a sta, a statement that was just made. Um, as you're well aware, the E's referring to an extended use district. That is, that is a possibility that, that can be done, but when the board looked at this issue, um, they felt that this use was too intense for, for the area that it was supposed. That's why it was denied. But, um, the extended use district does, uh, allow you to be very specific about a use that's usually accompanied by, tied to the site plan. And that's what he was alluding to, that's the reason why I came up to, just to be sure that, uh, I can answer any questions about that.
The board did agree, or did they, to, um, allow the zoning of Lot Two from B-one to the residential district, is that correct?
Yes. Yes, they did agree to do that. They just did not agree to rezone the, uh, the B-one to B-three.
What was the reason for that?
They, they felt the use was too intense for, for the area.
Too mechanics.
Too intense, too, uh, that-
Intense, oh, intense.
Generally, generally what you want to see is transitions of uses. That's what these buffer districts are intended to be used for, to transition from the higher intense uses like a car lot. The B-one is more of an office or a very light retail use currently.
Councilwoman McCullough, I'm gonna refer to you after... I believe Mr....
Melvin Armstrong.
Armstrong. We are waiting on you now.
Good evening, council.
Give us your name and address so we can have it for the record and you can start from there.
My name is Melvin Armstrong. I live at thirty-eight nineteen Bobby Place. My wife was supposed to be here, but she got called in. She had a baby she had to deliver at the hospital. I would have preferred her speaking today, she wanted to speak. But anyway, we was, we was at a venue about five weeks ago and we addressed this issue with the Metropolitan Planning Committee. And the Metropolitan Planning Committee voted this down nine to zero. I thought this issue had been resolved, but apparently it hasn't. I am here today to speak to the council. And what I have to say to the council is, this was a B-one area, me and my wife moved there last year. Me and my wife put our life savings into our home last year. We had a house built on Bobby Place. And he, Mr. Vance, wanted to put a car lot in my back door. And that would, that wouldn't be frugal for us. We moved out of a B-three district and we moved for a reason. And we had got tired of the safety issues, congestion issues, bringing property standards down, whole nine yards. So we decided to invest our life savings into this property. I don't know how you turn this thing on here.
That's it.
Okay, I don't know if... I don't know if you can see it there.
Yeah.
Okay, it's hard to see. But that is a thirty-four hundred and thirty-nine square foot house we built last year.
That's a pretty good sized house.
Thank you, thank you. And, and we put our life savings into those bricks that you're looking at right there. And like I said, by virtue of the fact that we moved out of a B-three area, we thought that we was pretty much safe, at least for a minute anyway. Last year was a short time ago for us. And to be confronted with a situation such as this, you know, so swiftly, you know, really caught us off guard. And I am in North Highland Subdivision. And as my councilperson knows, and I'm sure the rest of you people know also, we was hit with what looked like a tornado on the end of last week. We got people that had trees that has virtually split their homes. I know I personally counted about twenty trees that was uprooted in my neighborhood. We are going, presently going through a disaster right now as we speak. That's one of the reasons why there's not very many people here tonight. They are getting ready for the rains on tonight, tomorrow, and a lot of roof has been burst open. And the rain subsequently may be able to come in. Okay, so I'm down here standing along right now. But Mr. Wine had already made a presentation of all the disgruntled people. That was, I know the last time I counted, I know he had at least sixty-something signatures and he was still getting some. So I thought that this issue was resolved. This is the first time that I've dealt with something like this. And I'm here today. I wish Mr. Vance the best. Don't have any issues or anything with Mr. Vance. But there are a lot of places in Shreveport that you can have a car lot. I mean, you know, Shreveport boasts you the whole nine yards, you know. And for, to have a car lot in my neighborhood after I have made this type of investment in my back door is not feasible for me. And my neighborhood spoke on that account and they did not want it either. And that's the reason why I'm here today. Hopefully I have, I'm a disabled veteran, a hundred percent disabled vet. You know, I got a bullet in my hip right now that's giving me all kind of pain, been there forty-five years. And I appreciate you guys, this is on the venue, I know that can protect citizens from property value or what have you. And I'm here today, I understand what it's all about, being protected. Because like I said, I put my life on the line to protect my country. So this is the venue that I have, I'm here. Hopefully you guys understand where I'm coming from.
Thank you. Mr. McCullough asks you to weigh in. This is in the heart of your district.
Let me first thank you for coming, Mr. Austin.
Thank you, ma'am.
But what I'd like to share with the council, based on all of the information that's been provided to me as the representative of District A, I have spoken with Stephen Jean, MPC. I have also spoken with the North Highland Association members. I have also received calls from at least three ministers in the area. With everything that's been provided and brought before this council, this is my first time ever meeting Mr. Vance as his representative. And so the one thing I can appreciate is the fact that he didn't notify his representative. But my point is, with all of the overwhelming opposition that has come into play right now, I'm gonna ask that we uphold the decision of the MPC voting no for ordinance forty-three, yes for ordinance forty-four, and yes for ordinance forty-five.
Won't you take them one at a time so you make sure you won't get any... Now, is that a motion? Are you, are you ready to put that in front of a motion?
Well, I'll take them one at a time as you've directed me to do. Ordinance forty-three, as suggested by the MPC, vote no.
Now, is that you, that's a motion, can I get a second on...
Mr. Chairman, is it a motion to adopt and then she's asking you to vote no?
Yes. The motion is to adopt, but she's asking for a no vote on the adoption. Am I, did I...
Well, it was my understanding, I mean, when we discussed it on yesterday, we only discussed the, you know, the votes on the three ordinances separately. But, I mean, this was never brought to my attention yesterday. So if I need to do that, then I'll make a motion.
It's just customary that you make a motion to adopt and then you...
So move to adopt.
And you're asking the council...
You're asking the council to do a no vote?
Yes, for number forty-three.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, who's seconded a motion?
Councilman Sam Jenkins.
Clarification, would a, a no vote on forty-three does not repeal what we did at the last meeting?
No, but number forty-four will repeal.
We'll do it.
Okay.
This is just keeping from going to B-three.
All right. All in favor vote no. I'm sorry. All in favor vote yes. This piece of legislation fails with a seven oh vote. Okay.
Number...
Fail.
Number forty-four.
That's what you wanted.
Okay, gotcha. And then forty-four.
Okay, Mr. Thompson, you want to read, number forty-four?
This repeals ordinance number thirty-four of twenty-fourteen, an explanation. At the last meeting, the city council had the wrong property description in front of it when it adopted this ordinance. And so it's necessary for forty-four to be repealed to put... Thirty-four to be repealed to put the property back where it was as B-one property. That's what this does, it repeals ordinance number thirty-four of twenty-fourteen, which amending Chapter one oh six of the code, and which rezoned property located on east side of North Market, two hundred and fifty feet north of Pullman Road, Shreveport Cattle Parish, from B-one Buffer Business District to R-one D Urban One Family Residence District, and to recognize and maintain the zoning of the property described herein as B-one Buffer Business District and to otherwise provide with respect there too. So if this one is adopted, the lot number one will go back and be B-one.
I'm asking the council to vote yes, so move second.
No, it's, Councilman Jenkins, if you don't mind...
That's okay.
No?
I'm ready to move to the next one.
So motion by Councilman...
Oliver Jenkins?
Yes.
And she's through.
And seconded by... Undo a wrong that we made last time. I'm not...
All in favor vote yes, opposed is no. And the councilwoman is asking for a yes vote.
And also on forty-five, I'm asking for a yes vote as well.
Let's let Mr....
Let him read it.
Read that one, please.
Forty-five amends one, amending, amends Chapter one oh six of the code by rezoning property located on the east side of North Market, two hundred and fifty feet north of Pullman Road, from B-one Buffer Business District to R-one D Urban One Family Residence District, and otherwise provides with respect there too. This rezones the property, the lot where the house is, to R-one D.
Been moved by Councilwoman Rose McCullough, been seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. All in favor vote yes, opposed is no. This legislation passes with a seven oh vote.
Mr. Austin, let North Highlands know all as well.
Thank you, council.
And thank you for notifying me, Mr. Austin.
Thank you.
And Mr. Vance, you understood what went on?
I guess the house is residential with the lot one back to B-one.
Correct.
That's, that's true. All right, thank you, sir. All right, let's move, Mr. Thompson?
We're on ordinance number forty-one, it's a zoning ordinance, C dash four dash fourteen. It's an ordinance amending Chapter one oh six of the code by rezoning property located on the southwest side of West Wilderness Way between Landmark Drive and Skipton Drive, from R-two Suburban Multi-Family Residence District to R-two Pudd Suburban Multi-Family Residence Plan Unit Development District.
It's been moved by Councilman Oliver Jen, I mean, I'm sorry, Mike Carvin, Carvin, and seconded by Councilman Jeff Everson. Any questions or discussion at this point? If not, let's vote. All in favor vote yes, opposed is no. Legislation passes with a seven oh vote.
Number forty-two is a zoning matter, C dash twenty dash fourteen. It's an ordinance amending Chapter one oh six of the code by rezoning property located on northwest corner Shreveport-Barksdale Highway Service Road and Knight Street, from B-two Neighborhood Business District to B-three Community Business District.
Been moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Mike Carvin. Any questions or discussion? If not, let's vote. Legislation passes with a seven oh vote. Mr. Thompson?
Sir, and those are all of the items on the regular agenda to, for consideration today. I'm not aware of any table item that is to be pulled from the table.
Do we have any council member that would like to pull a piece of legislation from the table? If not, as far as the Ellen, property standards appeals?
All of those were handled yesterday.
We have no, we have none for today?
I believe all of the other appeals were handled on yesterday too, Mr. Thompson.
Okay, that sounds great to me. There are no ABO ca, we have none for today? Reports from officers, boards, and committees, because we postponed the other appeal, I believe, from the Cattle Parish Animal Service for two weeks, was it two weeks off?
Yes, until the next administrative conference, which will be on Friday.
That's not quite two weeks in it, is it? Trying to count my days up. Okay, reports from officers, boards, and committees?
I have one.
Please.
Just want to remind members of the B-four committee that at the last meeting, we said that we set a meeting for tomorrow at two PM to meet at the Barnwell Center. So we're gonna not meet in our regular space, but we're gonna meet on-site there to take a look at that project and have some discussion there. So that is tomorrow at two PM.
Matt, the councilman, I'm not gonna be able to make that meeting on tomorrow, so...
We will keep you informed and we may not have enough of a quorum to make any actual recommendations, but we certainly, it's more of an information gathering meeting anyway, so we'll make sure and share that with you.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion for the council to resolve the seven to the minute of the hold?
You're forgetting the most important part of our...
That's all right. It's, I mean, I've just, he only has that three weeks to prepare for it this time.
Don't ask for too much out of him.
Mr. Thompson, you see Mike and Oliver, huh? Those are your friends, all right? Did I get a motion? It's been moved by Councilman Mike Carvin, seconded by Councilman Jeff Everson, that we will...
I think that was Ron Webb.
I'm sorry, Ron Webb? I'm sorry. There you go, we will...
Mr. Austin, get all...
Resolve our seven to the minute of the hold. All in favor vote yes, opposed is no. Is there a motion for the approval of the minutes?
Check.
Been moved by Councilman Mike Carvin, seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins for the approval of the minutes. All in favor vote yes, opposed is no.
Mr. Oliver Jenkins?
I'm on, since we only have two, I'm gonna move down to public comments. Miss...
Fappe.
Is that Miss Fappe? Fappe, please. Please, Miss Fappe, and we want to thank you for your patience.
Oh, absolutely, no problem. Got the little timer thing. Am I ready to begin?
Yes, yes. Give us your name and your address.
Sure, okay, this is my first time being here, my name is Erica Fappe. I grew up on the eighty-two-hundred block of Bates Street in Cedar Grove. I now reside at eighty-two-hundred Pines Road. Basically, right now, what I wanted to kind of speak on is if you guys are aware of the rate of young professional people that are leaving the city. I can speak on being one of the individuals having gone to school, graduated, and not wanting to return here. And part of the reason that we don't want to return here is that a lot of people feel that there aren't... How to put this? There aren't very many things that focus in on us. It's more so of an, of an older kind of focus. And what, what part of my vision is, my grandmother instilled in me that if I wanted to be the change and to do something, that I should be the person to do it. So I stand here before y'all wanting to ask, are there any initiatives right now for young professional people? Are y'all helping the ages of, you know, twenty-two to twenty-seven with entrepreneurship or their, their efforts? You know, and if so, with me being one in a serial entrepreneur, why do I not know about these things? Even though I do work for Cumulus Broadcasting now, I still have trouble, you know, finding out about things that are going on in the city. You know, how, how is it that these things are happening around me, but I'm not really, they're not really presented in front of me? So I don't know if this is the proper format to ask these questions, but...
We can, we can, we can help you out some. First, I'll turn it over to Mr. Simpley and then I'll let council members go from here. I mean, do you have any specifics that...
Well, it's, it's not really specifics, because like I said, this is my first time ever being in this type of environment. So really, my, my question is, like, the biggest issue that I have is why is it that I can ride down forty-nine or I-twenty and see a huge advertisement for Dallas? It's basically like you're telling your citizens to move to Dallas, you know? And I, and I think that that doesn't make any sense, you know? Are we advertising outside in any other markets?
We are. I'd be, I'd love to have an opportunity just to briefly...
You will, let me, let me, Dale, you want to turn it down first? You want Jeff to go on? Okay, come on, Jeff.
No, I, you know, I am, I am somebody who, you know, about ten years ago was exactly in your shoes. You know, I had, upon graduating, moved away, felt I was having a little bit of trouble finding an entryway into Shreveport. I thought it was sort of, you know, a saw opportunities, but it was hard to connect to how to get into them. So I moved to another city for a few years and started a career and came back. And met a number of people who felt a lot like you do. And so I, at the time, was able to get involved in a number of initiatives and there are a variety of them around. But I think you've got the right attitude, is that you're wanting to get connected, you're wanting to get involved in them. And I'd be happy to share, you know, a list of the, a bunch that I know of, see what suits you, which you feel like is a good connection.
Yeah, that'd be great.
But certainly, you know, that there's a group through the African-American Chamber of Commerce, through the Greater Shreveport Chamber of Commerce, both have groups that focus on young professionals. The Cohabitat, which is under the Red River, the Red River Entertainment District. Cohab is a co-working space that seeks to develop young entrepreneurs, or entrepreneurs of any age, really. But it's a, it's a place that really can help people connect to other people that are entrepreneurs and kind of help build networks. That's one of the things they focus on strongly. And there's a number of other initiatives that I think, you know, sound like they would really benefit from your passion and your experience. And I think it's gonna take young people like you, who are, who are a gift to our city, to get involved. And so I appreciate you coming down here today to share your...
Thank you so much, and I thank y'all for your time. And if I may say one more thing, with me being a citizen of the Cedar Grove area, I make it my business to go back to, because I think it's funny that when I'm in that area, people ask me where I'm from. Because I obviously don't fit the mold of Cedar Grove, but I'll tell everyone any day that that's where I'm from. So one of my missions and what I'm passionate about is to let these people know that they don't have to do this to themselves, or they don't have to live the way that they live. So if there's something already similar to that for that area, I'd love to be a part of that as well.
Let me give you another suggestion in and out. If you enter the music scene, I would say get yourself connected up to Louisiana Hay Ride.
Okay.
Mike and I was down there Fri, Friday, right? And Dale, I kind of looked for you to come down with your guitar, but you didn't. And Mike and I hunched him a couple of times because I was a little bit off key, but I finally got it. That great opportunity is there.
Awesome.
And if you're interested in the movie industry, any parts of that, Mr. Mayor, what is our...
Arlena Acri.
Yeah, Arlena Acri.
Okay.
Would be happy to, you know, give you some input.
She has a list, that any time they're looking for people to get involved...
She, she has a list that anytime they're looking for people to get involved, she's up, and that's pretty good.
Okay.
We have the new startup prize, certainly in particular to.
The pop-up thing?
Nope, well, pop-up, but there's also a startup prize that just, this is the first year of the startup prize, and it's an idea of young entrepreneurs, I guess they don't have necessarily have to be young, but entrepreneurs with an idea that they are in some stage of business development, and you present your idea, and it gets vetted through a lot of diff- differing types of organizations and businesses here locally. And then they, uh, you know, give you opportunities to actually implement your business strategy. So that's, uh, I think, gonna be a great issue for young people with good ideas, certainly.
That's an offshoot of the Louisiana Film Prize and the Louisiana Music Prize.
And I can get, like, an email or something from you?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I'll touch base, I'll get you my card after this.
Okay, thank you.
And if you're in the arts.
I sing, so, yeah.
Yeah, well, good, great. Uh, what is, what is that?
The Shreveport Regional Arts Council.
Yes, the regional arts council, I'm trying to think of the lady's name.
Yeah, that, I think.
Yeah.
I think you'd find a number of programs, they're very interesting.
Right.
Great, thank y'all so much.
We're so glad to have you back.
Mr. Fappe?
And if you're, and if you're interested in the political arena, uh, you can check with, uh, Joe Shine.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
The mayor may have a few.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Fappe?
Yeah.
Let me, let me first of all commend you for, for coming down.
Thank you.
Uh, and posing the question, and, and having a genuine concern and, and a genuine interest, and, and waning through, you know, what has been, you know, some two plus hours. That is, that is to be respected and appreciated.
Thank you.
Um, and also know that, uh, there are those of us.
Yeah.
Who have been working, um, a very long time, uh, to try and make Shreveport, uh, the kind of place that young people in general, uh, and in particular, young people from Cedar Grove.
Right.
Uh, can, can continue to call home. Uh, and, and there is some progress. You, you heard some things that were shared with you, uh, today, that, that are some positive things. The fact that there is a YPI, Young Persons or Young Professionals Initiative of the Shreveport Chamber, that, that provides an opportunity. The African American Chamber has an effort called Young Urban Professionals. Uh, you know, that's an area that to be explored and connected with as well.
Okay.
Uh, there are lots of other opportunities that are out there. One of which we've tried to cultivate with the support of this council and previous council, uh, is our annual, uh, Mayor's Internship Program, uh, an effort to try and, and reach out to young college-age students and provide them with opportunities, uh, to be able to work within the, the city government, the various departments of the city. Uh, we connect and we network and we work with, uh, other businesses and organizations around the city to try and find places for young people to have a chance, uh, to be able to, to access opportunity.
Interesting.
You know, but I think you hit the nail on the head, and, and I think unfortunately the council why it is that, you know, we still end up, uh, with a real bad case of Shreveportitis, and why you just saw us appear again on the, the top ten list of, uh, I think it was what, the most miserable places to live.
Yes.
Uh, is that the reality is, is that our biggest export for Shreveport in particular happens to be young people just like you.
Very true.
Because the reality of our situation unfortunately doesn't live up to what the rhetoric, uh, that we, that we espouse. I mean, when you look at the various places and situations and circumstances around this city, uh, from businesses, since you've mentioned that you are an entrepreneur, uh, you know, there are very few young folks.
Right, right.
Or old folks who look like you, who are, uh, in business in general, uh, and reasonably successful businesses in particular. Uh, when you look at the ranks of the professional classes, you have, uh, a few lawyers like Mr. Jenkins and some others, uh, very few of those folks get a chance to do anything other than go, uh, and defend people in court, uh, and try and, uh, pursue people for personal injury cases and what have you. Very few of them work in the oil and gas industry, uh, very few, uh, if any, work in, uh, other areas outside of, of, of those traditional areas.
Right.
Uh, when you look at the, the senior management of the biggest institutions in this city, you know, whether you're talking about banks or, or our utility companies and what have you, uh, there are not many people from Cedar Grove or Cooper Road or what have you, uh, who populate those ranks. Uh, and that is a problem.
Mm-hmm.
It is a challenge. Uh, and it accounts for why it is, uh, that places like Atlanta become Atlanta, and places like Shreveport still stay Shreveport.
Right.
Uh, so I, I thank you for your willingness to be here, uh, to put your shoulder to the wheel and help make it better, uh, but know that it's not gonna get any better unless you and your generation ultimately demand it. The problem with that is you end up with easier options.
Yeah.
Available to you, in the Dallas's and the Fort Worth's and the, the Memphises and the Atlantas and the Mobiles and the Birmingham's and what have you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and so Shreveport stays about two hundred thousand people. Uh, and those folks who've always had, continue to have.
Right.
Those folks who don't, continue to want.
Right.
So.
So, and, and thank you so much, and I understand, and I, and I agree completely with you. You know, it's just that people, there aren't a lot of, our, my generation, there aren't many leaders. A lot of us are just leaving, you know. We're not leading, we're not trying to trailblaze anything here, we're not trying to transform anything here. So with me coming back here, I feel that I have a purpose here, and I feel like that's part of my purpose. So like I said, I mean, I thank all of y'all so much, uh.
Ms. Fappe, I wanna, I wanna tell you this too, like I, like I tell my two boys, I got two boys probably, uh, about your age, uh, finished from LSU. One works for Willis Night Healthcare System, and the other one told Mr. Withan, I wanna go to Houston. And, uh, he said, I think there's a lot of opportunities, uh, in Houston. And, uh.
They could never come back.
And it is.
Mm-hmm.
But there are some opportunities here.
Right.
And.
About twenty years behind.
Those young people have to do what you're doing.
And we are.
They can't be walking out there with their pants down.
Right.
If you understand what I'm saying.
Absolutely.
They can't be clubbing all night.
Absolutely.
Because nobody, nobody's gonna come to your house and open the door for you. And you're gonna get some doors closed in your face. But this is America. And if one door closed, you have to look for another one to open. This is, you know, this, this is the way it is. Um, I'm on the council now, and the, and the mayor's probably sitting there, and, and these other council members are sitting here because once upon a time, a suit was filed that we would change the form of city government, but it just didn't fall out of the sky.
They tried, they tried. But Shreveport, uh.
Opportunities are here. You have to work for them. You did the right thing by coming down. If there are any specific things that you would like to go into, what I would do, I would decide what it is, and then I'd come down and see if we have any programs down here that could help you do that.
Okay.
If not, then, uh, I think most of us could probably give you some advice of, 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 of some, you know, if you wanted to go into banking, maybe some bank. We, we do, now, we do have some blacks who are in banking. Uh, in real estate, we do have some that are in real estate. Uh, we do have some that are doing a lot of things. You just have to be able to find out who to touch.
Yes.
In order to get that door open.
Yes, sir.
Because, um, uh, you know, this is America now. Don't think Shreveport's gonna be like Dallas, no. Don't think Shreveport's gonna be like Houston, no. Don't think Shreveport is gonna be like Austin. Austin is the fastest-growing city in America right now, because you have the five hundred companies that are moving into these areas. But it's young people like you that can come and, and, you know, I, I hear the same thing at home from, you know, from my son, who's a LSU graduate, say, hey.
Ain't nothing happening.
Right. I said, but nobody's gonna give you something, you gotta make it happen.
Very true.
You got, you know, you gotta, you, you know, you, 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 you gotta make it happen. So I'm glad to see you come down. I, you know, if you, I wish you'd come back. Uh, Mr. Thompson over there, you see Mr. Thompson over there, he's clerk of council?
Mm-hmm.
You can always go up and talk to him, and.
Okay.
And, uh, you can look into, I was about to say, he has some gray hair, after a while, he won't have no hair at all, but, uh, uh, he'll be able to give you some advice.
Okay.
Uh, you can call me. I'll be glad to, to give you some advice. There are opportunities out there.
Absolutely, and I believe that wholeheartedly.
That's exactly right. You just have to be willing to fight for them. Now, don't think that people are not gonna close the door in your face sometimes, 'cause they'll do that.
Oh, I know.
Right.
And don't fault them because they do that. That's just, that's just human nature. And if anybody gives you that dreary story about, you know, doors have been closing in your face in Shreveport, you tell them, so what? Same thing happens in New York City. I know people over in, over in Dallas right now who's saying, well, you know, we need to go somewhere else, we need to go to Austin. But people are steady coming into Dallas and these places. It's left up to you. I appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
Person lives, if anything I can do to help you, I will.
Thank you so much.
God bless.
Is this, uh, Faith Fappe's?
Granddaughter grandmother?
Yes.
Oh, you're Faith Fappe's granddaughter?
Grandbaby?
Yes, yes.
Are you, are you related to Ashla Fappe?
Yeah, that's my sister.
Yeah, okay.
Graduated from Byrd.
Asha's a friend of mine from high school. Yes, indeed.
Okay.
Tell her I said hi.
Well, your grandmother graduated from Grambling.
Oh, I know.
So, don't worry, but, yeah. We're Grambling folks, we're Grambling graduates, so we'll help you. Thank you very much.
Nice meeting you.
Okay, we have, um, Ken, I'm gonna let you come up, but, what, hold it, Ken, I'm sorry. Ken, I'm sorry. Sammy. He's gotta catch the bus, Ken, you gotta call.
Actually, we're running with Malcolm. Sammy Mears, nineteen oh one, Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven one one oh one.
I have not, is Ms. Jones back there? I have not forgotten you now. Why don't you come on up close, 'cause you're gonna be.
All right. I was just watching recently on TV where they were talking about people who like to give their time, and of course, I'd just like to say that since I've been helping the MDA telethon, helping Miles Roberts with the music at my church, and just a couple of other things I've been involved in, that I really enjoy giving my time to help out in whatever way I can, so it means a whole lot to me, and, and just as of last week, I got a little bit of things helped being given to me because, okay, just as of, uh, last week was a good week for me, when I got in touch with Mr. Kramer for the eighth time and got to ask about his stock that Don Handley wanted me to ask about. So he wanted to know about how Green Mountain was doing. Jim Kramer said that the stock was up, then down, and then it's already apart from Coca-Cola. So after I talked to Jim Kramer, I even asked him to come autograph my two books, Get Rich Carefully and Real Money for me, if and when he does have time, and he's considering it next time he comes to Shreveport. And then Miles Roberts helped me get a picture that I had tweeted on Twitter for him to have, so he'll know what I look like in case we talk again. And then this past Thursday, I went to my church to let everyone in the church office know what was going on, and three times or four times, Jeff Segner wanted to know what stock I talked about, and I misunderstood him. He said, what was the stock? I said, did you say stuck? He said, no, Sammy. I said stalk. I said stalk? He said, no. I said, what was your stock? And then I had to mention it was Green Mountain. I just misunderstood him when I thought he said stuck and then stalk. But last week was the best week of my life. I got the best little bit of help that I need, so I'm gonna continue with doing what I'm doing to giving at my church to kind of help out whenever I can and continue with the MDA. This was on the news, I couldn't wait to let that be known. Thank you.
Sam, thank you. Ken, uh, let me get Ms. Jennifer Jones. Ms. Jones has been here for a long time. Ms. Jones, come on up.
Good evening, y'all. My name is, uh, Jennifer Jones Morris. I stay at ten forty-seven Wickerson Street. Um, I come tonight about a search warrant that was issued to my residence for, I guess, unlawful entry. I had a lawyer, um, to defend my case, but he denied my case after a couple of months or whatever, but my kids were there. And the guy that they was looking for moved two months prior before we moved there. They never did look up their records to see if the guy still stayed there, but as the, um, I guess whoever the jump our boys was, told my husband that the guy they was looking for was there two weeks before they came into the house. Not so, 'cause we had been there since May. So they put guns and stuff to my kids' head, and now my kids are taking medicine and stuff like that because they're acting out. And so I had to stop school because of this, because my kids cry, they can't sleep, and I can't sleep because it was, it's scary. I had to put an actual bar cave behind my door because we're scared, something happened, someone knocks on the door, they're running, mama, somebody at the door, the police at the door, and I'm, I'm feared, because they steady coming back to my house asking for this same guy that hasn't been there. And I know, I don't know who I need to turn to or where I need help from, because this is scary, I don't know if they're gonna come back. I might walk past the door, they might shoot me, one of my kids, my husband, anything, my mom, my brother, whoever's at my house, because they think activity is there. The house I'm renting from, it was drug activity there, but no longer is there anymore. So I just need some assistance or which direction that I need to go to.
Ms. Jones, I appreciate you coming down, and, and, uh, Mr. Mayor, this is also can be a part of Shreveportitis. I'm gonna turn this over to the mayor. The, the mayor, uh, heads up the, the, the Police Department, and we don't really handle that as a council, but he's in a position to give you some help, Ms. Jones.
Okay.
You wanna, you wanna just hold up, that's the mayor sitting right over there, turn to him.
Oh.
Right. Just, just, he might have something that he'd like to tell you, or either, uh, uh, talk to you in person or whatever it is, so I'm gonna turn it over to him at this particular point.
Okay.
We'll meet with you with the Police Department after the meeting. Uh, Mr. Shine, I think you, probably the council should be aware that these probably, uh, these types of situations probably represent ongoing active investigations potentially, so to, to have a discussion about these types of things involving search warrants and, and other things probably, uh, you know, would be best discussed, uh, in a communication directly with the Police Department. Uh, we have no knowledge in terms of what's transpired here at this point. We'll make that connection, have that dialogue, and, and obviously, we have an expectation that, uh, the Police Department's gonna conduct themselves always, uh, in an appropriate and professional fashion, but, uh, to sit here, uh, and respond to this without any deeper, fuller knowledge or understanding of it would be inappropriate, so we're gonna handle it with the police chief and the police personnel who are here.
Do, do you, you understanding what the mayor's saying?
You've got Deputy Chief Huddlestone who's gonna be with here, and as soon as the meeting wraps up, I'll be back to, to join to make sure we get this going all right.
As the chief right over there, and that keeps it from being public if you.
Okay, I understand.
If you, if you understand what's going on.
Yeah.
And, and I know how you feel if you had kids, 'cause I know I, I would feel if And, and I know how you feel if you got kids, 'cause I know I, I would feel if they was running in and out of my house, and I've told them that, "Hey, look, we don't have no drugs. Uh, uh, people here, the, the guy that was here, uh, moved, and you didn't do what you need to do in order to check to see whether he was here or not," because somebody could get shot. And I know you don't want that to happen, but if you're, if you're talking to the chief back there, uh, he will, and give him the information that you need, and it keeps it from being public, so to speak. But we don't really, council members don't really handle that, so to speak. That's an administrative function, so the chief would be more than happy to work with you, and, and it won't go all out over the TV.
Okay.
And we certainly apologize for you having sat back there for that length of time. Had we known, we would've managed to be able to get you directly with, uh, with Deputy Chief Holston to get some background on the situation, to see how we go about resolving.
So, you got another girl coming?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought so. Okay.
Thank y'all.
All right.
God bless you.
Uh, Ken, you showing a lot of patience tonight.
Kenneth Crap, Mr. Chairman at one fifty-seven Archer in Shreveport. I like the idea at the end, the clock's not on, I guess, when you're talking about items not on the agenda, so first and quickly, a reminder of what I said a year ago, the city council might wanna think about charter amendments, mostly technical, some substantive. Uh, the parish commission, they can be silly like May the third, you know, seventy-seven percent, no. Uh, but they can be wise when they do every four years a review of the parish charter. We're way overdue for that, and maybe, maybe at some point, whichever appropriate subcommittee might wanna look at that. There's, there's, you know, DOS existed for all those years, but it existed, but the charter. Anyway, the second thing would be public safety in the area of tornado sirens, and I started talking about this in nineteen eighty, when I, when I got started with the city. And we still don't have them thirty-four years later, and my oldest son, speaking of Miss Fape, you know, he left a year ago to go to Omaha, and the youngest is leaving to go to Lafayette. Both young professionals, each, each of whom got a much higher paying job in their same field, automotive and, and civil engineering. Be that as it may, uh, at Omaha tomorrow at noon, every Wednesday at noon in Omaha, Nebraska, the sirens go off, and they revolve three sixty clockwise or counterclockwise, I don't know, but they revolve, and they blast it out, and they warn folks. And, and a gentleman just mentioned a little while ago, folks are scared, you know? A week from today is, uh, I had to do a mine Google all over, uh, more Oklahoma tornadoes. And at Park Plaza Elementary, kids died, but the same storm eight miles later hit Pineview, and nobody died. Why? Park Plaza, traditional brick and mortar, the other school, structural steel embedded in concrete. Nobody got hurt. That should've been the news, but the media failed us and concentrated on the dead kids at Park Plaza, 'cause that's, I guess, gory dead little bodies, the little boys and girls is more exciting than a school where nobody got hurt. I've been emphasizing for years. So, let's, let's think about our public safety subcommittee or infrastructure. The next time we do a bond issue, tried to get this included four years ago in the bond committee, uh, couldn't get other members on the committee interested in sirens. Grew up with them in the fifties, but that was the impending nuclear holocaust from the Soviets that didn't ever happen. But, but let's get real serious about warning people, you know? The final story on that is nobody would've died at that, that state park in Arkansas had, had they been woken up by loud sirens. You know what they did? They texted them at two thirty in the morning. They tweeted them or something to wake them up to say there's heavy rain in the area. They were asleep. You need to blast them awake. Come on. And, and so, people, twenty people died at Albert Pike. Finally, Mr. Shine, you, you kinda helped me, 'cause you, you mentioned opening a door to Miss Fape, and, and I, I'd like to open the door. Saw the mayor this morning, and on the bond issue, you know, a year ago, I came before you and asked you to try to resolve it, and a year later, we haven't. And we haven't sold ninety million in a city with our bond rating and the current S and P. I mean, Moody's would earn a, well, we could've earned over three and a half million dollars in the last year had y'all resolved it. You took an oath, gentlemen, all eight of you. And, and he's the mayor. He's not the black swan. Uh, I mean, come on. Let's, let's work this thing out. Let's come up with a means by which we can do it. But fifty-three, four fifty over ninety million is, is less, about a twentieth of a percent. Not only that, okay, Friday night, municipal reopen, hayride on the first bond sale that did happen before the, uh, contra-tiffs between the legislative and the executive. Add to that the economic activity that doing the projects would inspire. You know, the, the concrete trucks would be rolling, and people would be putting in pipe and asphalt, and, oh, it, it, the, the internal service charges that would come into the general fund, and Subobject ninety-three fifteen for the engineering and design fees, probably over a million dollars a year. I imagine we've lost five million dollars in the last year by arguing. It's gotta stop. People are angry. I don't know if y'all had a ballot item right now. You could renew a public safety mileage or quarter cent sales tax. That thing on the parish is not the city, although y'all got blamed by one lady who didn't understand. "I can't believe the city is this stupid." Well, I can't say anything as commissioner in charge. I have to let her vote. When she finished, and nobody was there, I explained, "That's the parish commission. This is not a city." Huh? Well, the city's arguing about bonds all the time. You can't explain to somebody who's eighty-eight, who's a little early dementia, but, but I knew where her anger was coming from, gentlemen. We've gotta do better. We don't wanna go another year and let a new mayor and a new council. You know, we have a construction season that's upon us. It's mid-May. So, in summary, kinda A, B, and C. The city council, approved mayor, some, look at the city charter. The attorneys can really help us. Each department may have a suggestion that, that need to tweak it, get it in concert with the reality. Number two would be the, the overall safety area, the, whether it's sirens or, or whatever. And finally, the, the bond sales. I, I do agree with all of you that there's an honest disagreement over this matter, but is it wise? If, as a business person, you could get a four or five million on the one hand by solving the problem for fifty-three thousand and four fifty on the other, I think you would've come to a, to a successful negotiation by now. There might not be a means by which we can do it. You know, I'm, I don't know. I'm not the legal mind. But, but it, it occurred to me that when there's a will, there's a way. And it's like Will Rogers said years ago, right, right before his, his plane went down and he, and he was lost, uh, his grandfather taught him, "When you're in a hole, the first thing you do is you stop digging." Thank you.
Hallelujah.
Ken, thank you. Any more, uh, questions or not, uh, we will go back to, uh, communication from the mayor, and then communication from council members.
Thank you, Mr. Shine. Uh, I, I just wanna say, uh, amen, and, and kudos to everything that was just said. Uh, I mean, I couldn't have, uh, have said it any better myself. Uh, I, I think that those, uh, uh, sentiments should be, uh, shared, uh, again and again and again, uh, all around this city. And, and I think that they, uh, Mr. Shine, absolutely line up with, uh, what you just heard expressed by, uh, Miss Fape and, uh, so many others all around this city. You know, not everybody, uh, is, uh, lucky enough in Shreveport, uh, to have, uh, well-connected parents, uh, that can manage to be able to help, uh, provide access to opportunity for them. Uh, others have to figure out, uh, how to jump into that general pool of opportunity themselves and, and, and swim as best they can. And the more that we keep this pool of opportunity, uh, here in Shreveport shallow, uh, by the actions taken by our elected officials, the more in which we ensure that not only Shreveport, but by extension, all of Louisiana, uh, continues to be, um, a state where more people leave than, than come. And, uh, when you look as what was just said by Ken, uh, at how it is that we have engaged in trying to resolve, uh, what should be some very simple, basic issues, uh, over the last year and a half, uh, it's sad.
Dog, dog park.
Uh, and, and, and we've resolved the dog park, Mr. Shine. In fact, I'm, I'm glad you, you brought that up, uh, you know, in an effort to, to compromise, uh, in doing something that nobody except you seven council members voted for. Uh, no citizens, as Ken can tell you, as a member of the citizens committee. He served on that committee, and, and there was never a point in time where there was a request for a dog park to be included within the bond proposition.
I invited them twice. They didn't show.
Uh, for, for the record, says they invited them twice, and they did not show.
I don't think the dog park was in the bond issue, was it?
No, but in twenty-ten, they existed, and I invited them to the public meeting on May tenth. Twenty-ten, and nobody showed.
Well, it shows that they didn't wanna be in the...
They started asking in November.
It shows that they didn't wanna be in the bond issue. We had a whole slew of them down here.
That's fine.
Well, bottom line, by, by not being in the bond issue, nobody, uh, in any of the neighborhoods across the city of Shreveport, none of the citizens of the city of Shreveport had a chance to be able to vote on a dog park. The only folks who got to vote on a dog park are the seven folks who are on this council day. Uh, and that doesn't line up with the tens of thousands of people who went out, uh, at an average of about sixty-plus percent and voted in favor of three separate propositions, the largest bond proposal ever in the history of the city of Shreveport, uh, and voted it favorable, uh, something that, uh, as Ken just also pointed out, probably would be very difficult to see happen again based upon the way in which this process has gone forward. People have an expectation that when they make those votes, that those things should go forward before things that seven folks voted for, that nobody else in the city of Shreveport had a chance to be able to have any sort of input or dialogue about. And yet, here we are, still stuck, over, and, and Ken, you say it was fifty-three thousand dollars? It, 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 the truth of the matter is, it's, it's not really about fifty thousand dollars, uh, or fifty-three thousand dollars. It's about the fact that if you go back and, and you can construct this, you know, pretty well, you know, based upon the dialogue and, uh, the initiation of the internal audit, uh, where there were, uh, allegations that the, the administration was not cooperating, that we were somehow trying to, uh, to, to not provide information, all of which was not true. Uh, in fact, you had an internal audit going on that we didn't even know anything about. But as it turned out, uh, after having passed the bond issue, uh, the allegation was made after we went forward with an effort to try and fix the streets, because there's not enough mon- money in the bond issue to also fix the streets. The assertion was made, uh, by folks in this city, uh, some maybe on this council, but not publicly, uh, that it was not about fixing the streets, but it was about trying to do another bond deal. And the purpose of trying to do another bond deal was because there was something nefarious, something illegal, uh, something corrupt going on. Now, what that amounts to is calling me, as the mayor of the city of Shreveport, a thief. What that amounts to is calling me an extortionist. What it amounts to is calling me someone who would engage in trying to gain private benefit for my public service. I appreciate that the council has a responsibility for trying to ensure that I am not engaged in that type of activity, and that neither is anybody else who is a part of my administration is involved in that type of activity as well. That audit sought that out, came to the conclusion that that was not the case. Now, if there's anybody who is in a position, whether it's in the local media, you know, Three, Six, Twelve, the Shreveport Times, uh, The Inquisitive, or any of these seven council members, or any of their staff, to say something different, we stand ready and willing to take that off. If the sheriff can say something different, if the chief of police can say something different, folks at the Department of Justice, the FBI can say something different, we stand ready to address that issue. But none of those things were expressed or stated by Miss Graham and her staff, folks who work for this city council. Those folks, in fact, though, had their work not respected. In fact, it was stated unequivocally even before it was finished, that somehow it was compromised, that we had the capacity as members of this administration to somehow do a Vulcan mind trick that would convince good professional folks to not do a good job, and so therefore, what was needed was an external investigation. That external, external investigation was done to the tune of a hundred-plus thousand dollars, I think a hundred and eleven thousand if I'm not mistaken, came back with a list of very vague, nonspecific questions that this administration, along with the team of professionals, including Sharica Fields, Charles Madden, Calvin Grigby, Dale Simble, answered in very swift fashion. And then after all of that had been resolved, we go back to the first bond sale that we did manage to get done, Ken, where we ended up with the lowest interest rate in the state of Louisiana, the lowest cost, point-two percent of one percent, of eighty-plus million dollars. And, and we alleged, after it was approved by the administration, validated by the council, and then, more importantly than all of us, it went to a fellow by the name of John Neely Kennedy, a very ambitious young Republican down in Baton Rouge, who would love to find me, a great big old Democrat up here in Shreveport, doing something that was less than honest. Signed off by him and his staff, State Bond Commission. And then, we came back and said, "Oh, no, all of that's wrong. We need to reinterpret how it's interpreted, how it's billed." And now, we say that the man owes us fifty-three thousand dollars. You're right. We're stuck here picking up pennies and nickels and missing dollars that will ultimately end up inuring to the benefit of the city of Shreveport. We've got an effort that I admire. Councilman Everson voted for, uh, introducing, uh, Resolution Eighty-Seven, very good politics, and also, I, I appreciate his intention. I hope it was intended to try and advance and move this thing forward. He's also attempting to try and put us in a position to be able to go and do the park projects that are already engineered and designed, that can be done. But now, this whole thing isn't just about parks. In fact, on the list of priorities that we have as administration, and that you all have as council members, first and foremost, we've gotta look out for the safety of our citizens. Secondly, we've gotta be prudent about protecting the city's fist. Within that umbrella of safety comes issues like drainage, safe roads. And God bless him, I'm sure at some point Artist Sessario's gonna be down here. He and I have been exchanging emails. He tells me he's been visiting his, his mother down in South Louisiana, uh, but he's already reported to me that folks over off of Fairfield and Oakley have had to move cars in anticipation of the water that has come and is coming. Um, so, it, 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 it is, it is mind-boggling. I, I tell you though, what, 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 what goes back to the heart of the matter, and it goes back to the presence of Miss Fape here, and young folks like her, who are looking for opportunity, while there was no indication that in my twenty-plus years of public service, that I've taken or stolen or extorted or embezzled or attempted to receive from someone anything in consideration for my public service. The assumption was made that there was something going on that needed to be investigated. And even though that investigation did not yield what was, I don't know, maybe hoped for or believed by others, there is a refusal to accept what is the reality, that we're here simply trying to do a good job of serving the city of Shreveport, while at the same time trying to provide opportunity for all of this community, all of it, all of it. Not just east, not just west, not just black, not, not just white, but all of it, to have access to greater opportunity. That's why you've got folks like Sharica Fields, who's here today. But the sad reality is that there's so many others who are not. And part of the problem of it is, Mr. Shine, and members of the council, and I don't know how well you can be able to see this, but since the dog park was brought up, here's what you got.
Uh...
Mr. Shine, what you, what you've got here...
Mr. Mayor.
Is, is an image.
Mr. Mayor.
I positioned it so it can be seen. You've got an image...
Right.
That was placed on Facebook.
Mr. Mayor, you've been going for about twenty-five minutes. We've heard this...
Now, Mr. Shine, no, you haven't...
Over and over and over.
You haven't heard or seen this before, Mr. Shine.
I'm gonna let you, I'm gonna let you continue talking, but...
You haven't heard or seen this before, Mr. Shine?
I'm getting, uh...
Because this is something that does not exist in reality.
Notions from the council members that we're gonna bring this council to an end, and if you...
This is something...
If we have some news, uh, people here, they can continue to hear what you, what, what you're about to say.
You, you, you have a desire to, to, to make a, a, a whole group of folks in this city, Mr. Shine, who are not criminals, criminals. This is sent to you, Keith, to hear the dog park lines.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Placed a picture of a mock-up of yours truly, the mayor of the city of Shreveport.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything...
With, with a, with an image...
I don't have anything to do with that.
In prisoner's garb, with the prisoner's number. Now, now, Mr. Shine, there's some of us who are familiar with that.
Now, Mr. Mayor...
I'm not.
Well, 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 Mr. Mayor...
And the truth of the matter is, is that, is that this is what represents the priorities of this city right now.
No, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna bring this...
Unfortunately, continues to support and the facility.
I'm gonna bring this meeting to an end, and I would hope that you...
I, I would, I would, I would agree that you should do that, Mr. Shine.
A news media.
You, you should do that.
And do that. Okay, this meeting is adjourned, Dr. Chair.
It should be adjourned, because this is, this is what we have dissolved ourselves down into. And as I said, Mr. Shine, some of us can identify with that.
I can, Mr. Mayor. That's what you need. It'll make you feel better. You can go home and sleep tonight.
Some of us can identify with that, Mr. Shine.
I can. I can identify with a whole lot of things.
But now, that, that, that's part of our problem.
I can identify with a whole lot of things.
Is that, is that those habits...
I can identify with having a good education.
Those, those habits would still continue to be a part of what is at work in terms of business of this council.